Well, it's another beautiful evening in Pueblo, Colorado tonight. I'm calling to order this special city council meeting. This is the North Gateway Business Improvement District Meeting of the Board of Directors. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mark Aliff.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez.
Here.
Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Everyone is here and accounted for. We now move to item C, which is reading and approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I make, President Aliff, I'd like to make a motion dispense with a reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting dated November 20th, 2023, as distributed.
We have a second. Any questions? All those in favor? Oh, we're gonna vote by, uh, let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. We now move into item D, public hearings. Item D one, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, D one, is a Northgate Business Improvement District Budget.
Thank you. And do we have a staff report? Don't need one? Do we have one?
Good evening, Council. Mr. President, Madam Mayor. In front of you is the proposed 2025 budget for the Northgate bid. Um, you can see that the total estimated expenditures are $205,416. Of those, uh, $195,145 go to the developer. With the remainder going to the city as an administration fee. Uh, this concludes my report. I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this budget? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this budget? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Maestri, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. I now adjourn this meeting. Well, it's still a beautiful day here in Pueblo, Colorado, and I call to order this special city council meeting on the South Point Special Improvement Maintenance District. This is a meeting of the Board of Directors. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024. The time is 5:33 PM. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mark Aliff.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez.
Here.
Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Here.
Everyone is here and accounted for. We now move into the reading and approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
But, uh, President Aliff, uh, motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting dated November 20th, 2023, as distributed.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor Gomez. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. We now move into the public hearing. Item D one, Mr. Clerk.
D one, South Point Special Improvement Maintenance District, 2025 fiscal year budget, November 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, I know we have a staff report.
Hi, Council. The proposed budget in front of you is for the fiscal year 2025 for the South Point Special Improvement Maintenance District. Um, a list of proposed maintenance items include landscape in medians located on Hollywood Drive, Prairie Hawk Lane and Prairie Avenue, streetscape right of way along Prairie Avenue and west side of Hollywood Drive, south of Pronghorn Lane. The right-of-way landscaping around drainage crossings at Pheasant and Bobcat Lanes, including right-of-way areas adjacent to stormwater maintained drainage. The signage in Raccoon Lane, right-of-way, Prairie Avenue, right-of-way, and Hollywood Drive median. Maintenance of the road and neighborhood trail located along the drainage way and open space running from Prairie Avenue West to Heritage Village filing number four. Landscaped rock and drainage areas located at the east end of Bison Lane, north ends of Lion Pride Lane, Box Dan Court, and Lions Den Court adjacent to the drainage way. The recommended mill levy for property tax for the district remains at five mills for 2025. Um, in front of you is also the proposed, um, expenses in totality. Um, but this concludes my staff report and I'll field any questions.
Thank you for that report. Want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this budget? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this budget? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Maestri, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Latino, any questions? Let's call for the vote. It passes seven zero, and this meeting is now adjourned. Still a beautiful day here in Pueblo, Colorado, and I call to order the special city council meeting. This is the Banderas Boulevard Special Improvement Maintenance District Meeting. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024, and the time is 5:37 PM. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mark Aliff.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez.
Here.
Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Everyone is here and accounted for. We now move to reading and approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
President Aliff, I make a motion dispense to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated November 20th, 2023, as distributed.
Is there a second? Counselor Gomez, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. We now move into the public hearing. Item D one, Mr. Clerk.
D one, Banderas Boulevard Special Improvement Maintenance District, 2025 fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a staff report.
Hi, Council. The proposed budget in front of you is for the Banderas Boulevard Special Improvement Maintenance District for fiscal year 2025. Uh, recommended improvements to be maintained include the landscaped right-of-way of both sides of Banderas Boulevard from Bridle Trail, south of Pascadero Drive, including the medians. The landscaped right-of-way of approximately 200 feet of the south side or Bridle Trail from Banderas Boulevard West. The landscaped right-of-way on the west side of Banderas Boulevard from State Highway 78 north to Sienna Drive, including the medians Ventana only. The landscaped right-of-way of approximately 200 feet of Sienna Drive from Banderas Boulevard West to Ventana Circle. The landscaped median and roundabout median on Benzia Wayland Ventana Circle, approximately 200 feet from Banderas Boulevard West. The landscaped right-of-way and the two-acre drainage utility and public use parcel at Banderas Boulevard and Mojave Drive. Supplemental maintenance over and above the normal maintenance of the Parks Department. Maintenance along trail along Banderas Boulevard, south from Highway 47. And the board is also recommending to maintain the current property tax mill levy of five mills for 2025. This concludes my staff report and I'll field any questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this budget? Saying none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this budget? Saying none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Maestri, is there a second? Counselor Gomez, any questions or comments? Let's call for the vote. It passes seven zero. And before I adjourn, as I do in every regular meeting, if for any reason somebody is looking for a pet this year, please utilize our animal shelter and the local rescues because they have the best pets. And when you do get one, please have them spayed, neutered, and put one of those microchips in them so when they get lost, we can get them back to you if they ever do get lost. And with that being said, these special meetings are adjourned. Now we move into our work session, and I will switch places with, uh, our work session chair, Counselor Maestri.
Good evening. Tonight is, uh, Monday, November 16th, 2024, the time of the 18th, 2024, and the time is 5:43 PM, and we are going to start our regular work session. And we'll start with an update from the Chief of Staff, Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, this Friday, November 22nd, is a free family movie night at El Centro del Quinto Sol. The movie starts at 6:15 PM in the multipurpose room, and the concessions will be open. There's also a toy drive there. You could donate new unwrapped toys now until Saturday, December 7th. The toys will be gifted to children, infants from infant to 18 years old at El Centro Annual Holiday Celebration. Donation locations include El Centro at 609 East Sixth Street or Pueblo Parks and Rec Administration at 800 Goodnight Avenue or Inside City Park. The event will be held on Saturday, December 14th, from 12 to 2. There's also a holiday Zumba-thon at El Centro del Quinto Sol, December 7th, from 11 to AM to 1 PM. And if you donate a free toy, you can enjoy two hours of free Zumba, and then pass the next part on to the mayor.
I just have an update that I left at your stations tonight. This is a budget change for November 25th. Um, that's been amended that you will see to vote on. This is a request by President Aliff and Counselor Gomez for the admin assistance. Uh, the position was unfunded and frozen, and so it is now, uh, will now be funded and, um, go out to, uh, prospects. So this will show a reflection in the numbers on the 25th, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention before you see it.
Well, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Is there anyone on council that has anything that they would like to say? Okay, well then, with that, we will go ahead and get started with our first, um, topic tonight, and that is sustainable building and design with Mr. Brian Dunbar and Clayton Bartzak. And so, welcome, gentlemen. And they are both with the, um, Institute for Built Environment.
Thank you, Council. And, uh, I'd like to start by saying thank you for all of the work that you do. When we have the opportunities to speak with councils at various cities that we work with, we realize the hard work that you put in on behalf of not yourself, but your community. So thank you very much. Also, Dennis, I'd like to say thank you to you for the invitation to us. Dennis and I have met together, uh, a few times in the past, and, um, he realizes, I think, that Colorado State University, uh, in Fort Collins, as well as Colorado State University in Pueblo, have the opportunity to assist the city of Pueblo, uh, more than we do. And, uh, that's one of the reasons we're here at this point is to, uh, let the council, as well as all residents, understand that we are here and we have some things to offer. So with that, I'm going to, uh, uh, get us started, and Clayton and I will provide some background to each of you uh, about some of the things we are specifically offering to you.
So, there's a photograph of our, uh, beautiful campus.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, our campus at Colorado State University in Fort Collins, um, our institute, it's called the Institute for the Built Environment, or IBE. Uh, you can see that we work to create healthy, thriving places, and we do that by elevating the collaboration between people, teams, and organizations. And we focus on people, place, and potential. We've been, we just celebrated our 30th anniversary. So we've been helping communities in Colorado and in other states, and once in a while, other countries, work toward, uh, helping and enriching their culture, their, uh, social benefits, their economic benefits, and their environmental benefits. And we think of it as providing, uh, collaboration, uh, toward the health of, excuse me, the communities that we work with. And specifically, we get to work on custom programs for you, uh, like custom sustainability programs. And again, when I say sustainability, I'm talking about culture, social issues, environmental issues, and economic issues. We've done a lot with, uh, healthy green buildings, with community engagement, and with, uh, research. And you know, we're at Colorado State University, Colorado State University, thanks to Abraham Lincoln. He set up that ev- every state would have a university that is for the people, that is called the Land Grant University. CSU Pueblo is part of our system, and we are here for communities. As a faculty member, I don't just work on research that goes to a bookshelf. Instead, I work on research that goes into communities for the benefit of our state. So thank you, Abraham Lincoln, for setting that up for all of us. So, uh, as I talk about a couple of these programs, I'll start out by, um, by turning this over to Clayton and letting, letting Clayton talk about our custom sustainability programs.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, so, as Brian mentioned, uh, we're happy to be here with you tonight. Thank you so much for having us. And, uh, wanted to tell you a little bit about custom sustainability programs that we do. We basically have opportunities to work with, um, public institutions, municipalities, state and other government departments, and working to help create different avenues for, um, for really enhancing the way that they're working with their community, whatever that might look like. So, um, some examples of those we can see on the next slide are, um, we've been involved in a number of different climate action planning facilitations. So helping communities create climate action plans that reflect their communities' wants, needs, uh, barriers, and, and all the benefits that come with that. Um, similarly, we're working right now with the city of Denver and the Office of Climate Action Sustainability and Resiliency, um, on a climate awareness program, basically. So we're, um, working to understand how the community views their role in taking action in, in terms of climate action and, um, understanding what the community's level of awareness around what the issues are, but also what potential actions they can do to improve their communities as a whole. Um, Brian, do you want to mention the whole school, whole school sustainability framework, maybe?
Sure, yeah.
We were fortunate to have a graduate student a few years ago who came to Colorado State University and said, "I want to learn what, uh, the benefits of a green school are." And by the time Stephanie was finished with her education and her thesis, she created something that is now used around the country and in other countries called Whole School Sustainability Framework. You're looking at a graphic of that on the screen, and it's something that we continue to then have the opportunity to work with school districts around the country to help them find benefits of high-performing schools. And when I say high-performing school, I'm talking about a school that serves its students and its community by having better classrooms, healthier places, and economically lower costs uh, for the energy and water use throughout the school district. So it's something that, uh, I want you to know that we have that to offer, and if there's schools in Pueblo that we could help out, we certainly would enjoy that.
Well, and I'm glad you mentioned Stephanie because that's another big part of what we do at the Institute for the Built Environment is we have the opportunity to work with students from across the university. So we have students that are working with us as interns throughout their time at CSU. They might be in a sociology department, or a construction management, or a design department, um, or they could be in a, some sort of engineering program. And they get to come and work with us on real-life projects, working with communities across the state to implement some of these kind of actions that we're doing. So, um, uh, behavior change campaigns is another big thing that we've been involved in. We've been, uh, working with the University of Colorado at Colorado Springs on a behavior change campaign that was focused specifically on water reduction on campus. And so, understanding how the students that are living on campus there are using water and how they can help to reduce their, um, use of water on campus, which has been a big goal for them, so.
The next area I'll mention is, uh, healthy green buildings. You're looking at a, uh, a building in downtown Fort Collins that we helped on. This building is creating more energy than it uses. You've heard about, and, and there are some examples of buildings around Pueblo that are considered net-zero buildings. And this one is a net-positive building, and it's something that we are really advocating. Why not create more energy than you use? And what if more and more buildings did that? So that fits along with, uh, work that we do where we help municipalities and communities and schools and homeowners uh, work toward having high-performing buildings. And sometimes that means a, a certification such as LEED. A LEED certification, which CSU Pueblo has some great examples of LEED buildings, as does the city, uh, of Pueblo. That stands for the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, and a LEED Platinum Building, the highest level of building. Uh, CSU Pueblo has examples of that, CSU Fort Collins does. And the example of the project that I just showed you is the highest level of, uh, LEED certification. WELL certification is for healthy buildings. Uh, and then there's LEED for cities and communities. And as council members, you probably realize that you're one of the few cities in Colorado that has a designation and a certification as a LEED city. And that's something that you should be proud of. Um, there are other certifications and things that we continue to work on, and again, we would be happy to help you. In fact, if we were ever to help on a project in the city of Pueblo, we would immediately collaborate with CSU Pueblo and involve students from CSU Pueblo on those projects so that they can learn real-life things that could benefit the community, as well as benefit them and their careers. So it's a real opportunity that we seize on in northern Colorado and other places, and we'd be happy to help, uh, CSU Pueblo in that regard.
Uh, another main focus area for us is on community engagement and facilitation of different types of community events and workshops. Um, so really, um, our main goal in that is to first listen and understand what communities are looking for and what the people within a given community are, um, you know, what types of, uh, benefits and barriers that they see and they perceive in their own community. And then we help them collaborate with the partners and municipalities and other agencies and, um, businesses that might be involved in whatever the initiative is and can be, uh, broad range of different things, um, to really help them, uh, create something that works for everyone. So a few examples of that, um, we've done a number of different, uh, transportation and, uh, electric vehicle planning, uh, community engagement efforts. One of them, uh, for the city of Pueblo, which I believe you all had presented to you last week. So our role in that, working with, uh, the city's partner Iconergy, was to do the community outreach, understand what the community was interested in from an electric vehicle plan, and what kind of things they thought would be challenging for that. And so we implemented and facilitated the survey process, as well as the community workshops that were done. Um, a lot of times we get to do this in a bilingual setting, which is great. Um, and that's something that we're, uh, proud to be able to offer in-house. Um, we've also done similar engagement for climate action planning, excuse me, uh, specifically for Frisco, as well as a very extensive process we did with Laramie County, which was, uh, really a new style of climate action planning, which, uh, took, um, rather than the, the county themselves creating the plan, we actually created a, a, a bunch of different work groups who were able to, uh, represent different aspects of the community and different businesses. And those community members actually created the plan that the county, um, uh, developed and implemented. So, uh, it's really a, a, a different way of doing a, a climate action planning process. We, uh, last summer, Brian and I, actually last winter, I guess it was, we, Brian and I had a chance to go down to Pagosa Springs and do some work, uh, with a local school there, helping create a regional workforce training center um, that was really focused around construction and auto mechanics and, uh, uh, various different things like that. Um, and then, uh, all the way to things like, uh, working with housing authorities on community engagement to understand what are the affordable housing issues within any certain community. So we did something similar to that with, uh, the Chaffee Housing Authority, which is Salida and Buena Vista. And then also have been working, um, over the past few months, uh, recently completed a project with Fort Collins in the Pooter School District where they were trying to understand the community's, um, perceptions of a potential school consolidation plan, where they were looking at some budget shortfalls and needed to understand how do we, how do we figure out which schools to consolidate, which ones to keep open? How does the community want to be a part of that process of developing a plan that works for everyone? So, uh, those are just a few examples of some of the engagement efforts we've been a part of.
And that is, was a difficult, uh, situation, as you can imagine. I know the city of Denver is going through that right now. It's, uh, it's fresh in the news. Uh, we have done projects like that. They aren't very fun, but we're, we actually feel like we, uh, have the ability as a third party, a university, to come in and help citizens work together to try to find, uh, common ground when there might be conflict, so that we've done a number of things in that regard. Now, I'm a professor. Now, I'm a professor, and so I, I typically end things by testing or quizzing you. So I want you to be prepared for a couple of questions. But, but in seriousness, we will be asking if you have questions of us in a few moments. And we have a couple of ideas of things that we'd like to learn from you. So we'll ask you a few questions as well. The last area that I'll talk about is, is research. And when I, I talked about Abraham Lincoln, we do applied research. So we do research that is action research that benefits communities. So if there's a question, like for instance, I know you have some fire stations that are working to be net zero or, or propose or, or call themselves net zero. CSU Pueblo and CSU Fort Collins could monitor buildings like that and say, how are you doing? And how could you do better? What if they aren't quite net zero? We had to do that with that project that I told you was net positive. They weren't net positive the first year. What, what can we do to make it better? How can it actually perform better? So you could look to the universities to help with that sort of thing and many other kinds of questions. One of the things that we're really excited to share with you is a new program called Lifelong Communities and Lifelong Homes. We were challenged by groups in northern Colorado that says, you know, a lot of people are retiring to Colorado and they can't always find housing, especially housing that could meet their needs if they have limitations now or in the future. So a lifelong home is one that you could actually live in all of your life. You could raise children there. The children in a stroller could, could feel comfortable in there or that are crawling or that are small, as well as someone who has a disability, various disabilities through life, as well as someone who would like to successfully age in their place. Nursing homes are going away, unfortunately. Nobody, it's hard to afford. No one really wants to be there. And it's hard to find people that want to work there and pay them well enough. So more of us are getting older. That might sound comical, but what I mean is if you look at the ages, ages over 60 right now, that baby boomer generation is retiring, getting older. There's more of us than there are people being born these days in many places like Colorado. So what if, so here's the problem. Nursing homes are going away and our homes don't necessarily provide the support. So one thing we've done now is created a program to teach developers and builders how you make lifelong homes and lifelong communities. And so this is something we encourage you. Housing is an issue, whatever community we're talking in. And, and let's do housing right in the first place. It's hard to fix a problem to allow someone to stay in their home and they want to stay in their home. So let's do it right in the first place. So that's something I wanted to share with you. A new program, we just had the opportunity to present this at a national conference that brings 10,000 different architects and builders together in Philadelphia last week to great attraction. So it's something that I think is going to grow. It makes sense and it's something that we could offer to help Pueblo with. And as you look at the qualities of a lifelong home, we separated into these different areas. It's about community and their context. It's about the concept of visitability. What if you have a disability and you'd like to visit another place? Can they accept you in a comfortable way? Design and adaptability, which gets into ADA and those things. Health, safety and wellness, which goes beyond and looks at healthy air and healthy lighting and healthy environmental qualities. And then affordability and maintenance. How can it be affordable and how can it be maintained? This brings some of those high performing building concepts back into play. So I just wanted to leave you with that thought as well. And then another thing that we're excited that we're working on now, we have funding, national funding to create a regional network for sustainability for Colorado. And it, it does feel like Pueblo should be part of that into the future. And to be part of that, you'll get to share what you're doing and learn from the other communities in Colorado about what they're doing to help their economic situation, to help their cultural situation and to help their environmental situations. And so now that we've presented, here's what we offer and here's what we do. I'd like to turn it back to you and see what questions you might have for us that we might have mentioned to you, but maybe mentioned in a quick way or some other way that we can help you. And then again, we could propose some questions to you. But first I'd like to turn it over to any of you that might have questions.
Great. Any questions from council, Councilor Flores?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I wanted to acknowledge Dr. Jim Valenzuela, who's over here to my right. He's the one that got me really interested in bringing these concepts into Pueblo. And we've had a few successes. But, but I think the, the culture is that when you build something, you build, whether it's a commercial building or a multifamily or even single family, it seems it's always about the cost at, at this moment in time. And I think a lot of times convincing people to, to build a net zero building, it almost becomes a math problem and convincing people that you need to understand the, the, obviously the present value, but how much savings you could occur over a lifetime of five, 10, 20 years. And I'm wondering, does that kind of model exist? Because I think most people, they're fearful that if they go down, if they go down that path, that that project is going to be really expensive.
Dennis, that's a, a great question and it is a common concern. I, I will, I'll take you back to our school district in Fort Collins, where they came to us with the idea of we have a bond. We're going to create seven new schools. And this was in the early 2000s. And yet we'd like to make them green schools and even LEED certified schools. Can you help us? So then we were tasked with training the architects and the builders that were going to work on their first schools and then helped that project become LEED certified. I have to tell you, I had the same concern. Is this going to cost more? Well, when we finished with the Fossil Ridge High School, it achieved LEED Silver Certification. It did not go over budget and the budget did not include LEED certification in the first place. And in fact, the building saves $100,000 in utility costs per year. And it didn't cost more to build in the first place. Now, it's not magic, but you have to have an integrated team to do it right. And so it does take ownership to, to ask for it in the first place. It takes the right team to do it and the right team has to be a championship team, like consolidated, working together to do that. Sometimes a certified, a LEED certified building costs slightly more. But as Dennis was suggesting, over time, it's actually going to save money. But I'm talking about, we have case study projects that didn't cost more in the first place. So do it right in the first place with the right team and the right process and you'll end up with the right results.
But my second question has to do, and I've had the opportunity of looking at a lot of the buildings at CSU Fort Collins that are net zero. And not to get into, you know, the, the, the construction legal explanation, but can you walk us through a building, like the building you just showed on, on the, on your presentation? And describe, describe the things that, for a better word, the guts of the building now that are different than the, the big HVAC, you know, exchange units we have now.
Sure.
What, how does that, in layman's terms, how does the guts of a building like that look? I think it's, it's kind of a mystery to the public, you know, as to how you can, you can produce energy.
Yeah.
And.
The answer is that there are a lot of different ways to do that, Dennis. But I'll, I'll point to your recent hospital here, or healthcare center. That is a great example of a building that from the start had a great team. We didn't work on it, but I just know about that project. It uses an energy source, the ground. And then it has a great building envelope with great insulation, a lot of well-placed windows and glazing that are in the right place to allow light in and not heat in from the sun. And then that light, that daylighting allows people to be healthier. We like natural light, it's good for us and to not have to use as much electricity. So great envelope, great energy source, can be solar, can be electricity. A lot of electricity is, can be clean and renewable as well as ground source. So it's great energy, a great envelope, great natural light, those kinds of things. And, and really healthy air in the first place.
Along with solar, right?
Solar is a, a great idea. And that example of our net positive building has solar on the roof. Yeah.
So how do you, how do you, do you have models, I guess, of existing buildings that can be retrofitted and
Yep.
modified so that they may not be able to take total advantage of net zero? But maybe you could have a situation where, you know, you can, you can make those modifications and really maybe bring your utility costs in half.
Yeah.
Do you, do you do stuff like that?
We sure do. Yeah, we're fortunate in Fort Collins to have a city-owned utility or, you know, community-owned. And our utilities hires us to come in at the start of a project. And it might be a city building, it might be a church, it might be something else. And the city then offers money to the, to the owner of the building to start the process in the right way. And from the start, we will look at those energy solutions. It's called the Integrated Design Assistance Program. Integrated Design Assistance Program, program that the city of Fort Collins offers. It's a very good model of a program to get things going in the right way from the start.
Thank you.
Councilor Martinez?
Thank you for that presentation. I want to start by saying that my undergraduate degree is from Colorado State University. So go Rams. I have a couple of different questions. My first question is for the network sustainability cohort that you were talking about in Colorado, would that be best for our housing department or planning zoning department or community groups? What, what types of sectors would be best for that?
Good question, Sarah. All of those will be part of that. We've done the initial work and we're waiting for, to find out that we have funding to really bring that fully together. As soon as we do, we'll certainly reach out to Pueblo and say, you're invited to be part of this.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. And I think that, I'm, I mean, I think staff would certainly be interested in learning from a network and cohort of, you know, people who are working on similar municipal projects, like our three fire stations that you talked about. And I think so often Pueblo is left out of those conversations and those circles. So if you could loop us or staff back, I think that that would be great.
Yeah.
I, so you know, you, you had a, a great example about utilizing the three fire stations and perhaps asking some research questions or doing an audit, you know, post-construction. I'm curious of any other tangible examples that you can think of, of how you can help Pueblo.
We have a, a great program in public health. And public health exercise is to have groups of students to look at, let's say, different intersections, different neighborhoods and, and find out when they're, what those problems are. So we have done some of those kinds of problems in different cities that can identify things that might help especially populations that are marginalized to have a healthier neighborhood. So that's another one that quickly comes to mind. Clayton, do you have any?
In terms of making them more walkable or?
Yes, safer, more walkable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about too, all the different community engagement, potential collaboration opportunities that there are. I mean, I think many of the different times that we've collaborated with municipalities have been to help make sure that the city planning process, whatever aspect of planning it might be, takes into account the community's needs and all of the community's needs. So making sure that underrepresented voices are really brought to the table and heard and, and explain to them how the city is taking that into account in the planning process. So I think too, we've, we've started some conversations with developers across the state in terms of using lifelong communities as a guidance program for new developments. We've talked with a number of different developers here in Pueblo as well and are interested in seeing how that might move forward for specific developments. And I think in a lot of ways, those developments are most successful when, when the city is excited about something new and really beneficial that they're doing for that community. I know we saw that in Fort Collins with a development that really helped launch the, the lifelong communities process. And they've really been embraced by the city as something, something that's new. And it's, it's a different type of, of development that is going to give back to that community for a long time.
That's great. And so, and this isn't a city project per se, but have you heard about the net zero jail that's going up?
No.
Oh, well, Pueblo County's doing that. Maybe you should talk to them.
Oh, we should, yeah.
It's, I think it's going to be the first net zero jail in the whole country. Mr. Valenzuela is saying yes, so. Oh, just go. Oh, okay, yeah. So you should talk to them. That would be a good connection to make.
Great, thanks, Sarah. So I have a question for, might be for city staff. If anyone would, would know the answer to this, the, the LEED for cities certification that Pueblo has achieved and not many cities in Colorado have achieved that as of yet. Does anyone know who is, where that is coming from? Who, what department is working on that or monitoring that?
So I believe our friends at the county took that on. And so I, I want to say it was years ago that the county took that on in one of their energy coordinator positions. Laura Getz at the time was the energy coordinator for the county.
Yeah.
And I can get you her information.
Yeah, I've met Laura. Oh, so I'm, I'm stand corrected then. I thought it was a city of, of Pueblo that received LEED for cities certification, but you're saying it was the county.
County.
Okay.
Well, we'll take it.
Yeah.
It's the city.
Yeah. It's a great program because it allows you to, to understand your baselines for energy, water, landfill, transportation, a lot of different aspects. And then once you have that baseline, how do you improve that? And it does take monitoring from, from year to year. And it's something that we would offer or we would work with CSU Pueblo to help you with that. Are there any other questions?
Uh, Councilor Gomez?
Yeah, I got a couple. Give me the LEED stands for what again, because I missed that.
Yeah, LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And there are four different levels of LEED certification, the highest being LEED Platinum.
Okay, and do you get, do you receive any taxpayer grant funding at all? Or is it mostly that?
There are, there are grant programs that help some projects reach LEED certification or WELL certification. And there are some other certifications that you can find grant money for as well.
Okay, and then in reference to, has this been applied at high school level, junior high? Have they been introduced to this already?
Do you understand the question?
So just to confirm, you're asking if there are high school and junior high school building projects that have achieved LEED certification?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, certainly. And there are, there is actually a lead for schools program, which is specific to a lead certification program that has been developed specifically for schools. We're also working right now with a school district in northeastern rural Colorado called the Weldon Valley School District in Weldon, Colorado. And they're using a program called CHIPS, which is the Collaborative for High Performance Schools. It's a very similar rating system as lead, but has a little bit more flexibility and tends to be better suited for rural school districts. And the way that that school district is using it is because they had pursued and were awarded grant funding through the Colorado Best for Schools Grant Program. And so in order for schools to utilize that grant funding for best schools, they're required to either pursue lead for schools or the Collaborative for High Performance Schools.
And you're also aware of a lot of the high schools, not just here, but in a lot of states, having issues with air conditioning and that kind of things and trying to renew that, those kind of energy problems. Are you familiar with that? And we had one right here in Keating High School. I know that because we had a program out of there and we had to get in our own air. They couldn't afford it. So I'm wondering, a lot of these schools that can't afford these, this was an at-risk school kind of, but we worked to get the air conditioning for them. But maybe there's other routes that are less expensive. Everything in our community, everything from convection to all things that we don't know. We don't pass on to people. When you live in a community where they don't understand those issues or, you know, you, you, every day, I drive through with some of the poorer neighborhoods and I see people have their fans outside their window blowing in the hot air as opposed to the.
Right.
There's little things like that.
Yeah.
I don't understand why we're not grabbing that by the, does that make sense?
And Roger, that, as I, I'll go back to saying it, you know, it takes a team and a championship team to do some of those things right. And so doing it right from the first place by having the RFP written, we can help the city of Pueblo and your departments to make sure that some of the language is in there so that the right people apply and then they get selected to create these championship teams. To do existing buildings or new buildings.
Are you aware of Tesla homes, boxable homes? Are you aware of the, all the low energy?
Yes.
Thing usually around $7,000 to $10,000. I've seen estimates on it.
Yeah.
And how they make full communities for homeless, even provide a yard, a place for their dog. Are you familiar with all those programs?
We sure are. Yeah. We, and we like to call them wellness communities. And we helped with one in Del Norte, Colorado, that's adjacent to the hospital.
Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
I wanted to just mention too, something that answers your question a little bit as well as Counselor Flores's previous question around how do we know that we're making a good investment? And so part of that is during the early stages of design, we go through with the integrated team and do what's called a total cost, total cost of ownership analysis. And so looking at what is a building going to cost to operate in the long term, rather than just looking at the first cost is really important. And I think as we all know, with rising utility costs, some of those later in life costs for operating a building are a little bit unknown. But I think we all know that those utility costs are rising and that that's something that we have, you know, one of the ways that we can help mitigate those rising costs over time for our school districts and our city buildings and our residences as well, is to try to make them as efficient as possible so that we're, we have a lower amount of risk in the long run for costs that are unavoidable, but also a little bit unknown right now.
Okay. Well, I think any more questions? All right. Well, thank you for your time, gentlemen, and we're going to move on to our next, your, your, are you completed?
Thank you and best of luck to your city. And thank you again for all of the work that you do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to our next topic. Public Police Department 2023 Annual Report from our Chief, Mr. Knoller, Chief Knoller.
Thank you, Madam Counselor, Members of Council, Madam Mayor. What we're going to do tonight is talk about our 2023 Annual Report. I would like to say, obviously, this report came out much later in the year than we had, we would have liked. But it's because of all the other things that we're working on that this didn't get done a little bit sooner like we normally have it done in the, in the year. So, but I think it's really important to go over some of the, some of the data from 2023 as well. So first thing I would like to cover is what we look at when we look at crime is part one and part two crime. Part one crime is the more serious crime. That's the crime that I usually come and talk to council about. This is the crime data going back to the last three years, 21, 22, and 23. You can see in the data there that there is a couple of areas where we had increases, motor vehicle theft and theft from motor vehicle are two areas where we had a percentage increase over 22. But the other areas, we saw some not so significant to some more significant reductions in crime in that part one crime category. This is part two crime. There's two slides regarding part two crime because there's more, more things that are covered in there. But some of the overall crime issues include other assaults which aren't aggravated, offenses against family and children, criminal mischief, curfew and loitering, disorderly conduct, prostitution, drug narcotic violations and liquor law violations. You could see in there, it's kind of a missed bag on part two crime where we had 43% increase in curfew and loitering site, or crimes. What I would say is probably part of that is due to increased enforcement in 23. It's certainly, some of it would be increased calls as well. But usually on a crime like curfew and loitering, the only time we would have a report is if we took a report on that incident. It wouldn't be a call for service alone that would drive those numbers up. White collar crimes also are part of part two crimes, which include fraud, counterfeiting, fraud, gambling offenses. We saw decreases across the board in there. We may see an increase in gambling offenses this year due to shutting down some of the fishing games, stolen property, weapons law violations and other offenses. We did see an increase in stolen property of about 10% in 23 compared to 2022. Overall, part one crime was down, or part two crime was down 10%. Some of the response times related to our priorities. We did see an increase of 46 seconds in our priority one response times. We saw a increase of a little over a minute and a half, a minute 45 seconds in priority two. And then those increases start climbing pretty dramatically when you look at three, prior to three, four, five, and six crimes. The officer-initiated calls for service are what we call proactive police work. Those have increased over 2022 by about a little bit over 4,000 calls for service. Roughly 15% increase in, in self-initiated activity by the officers. Our dice team, which started in 2022, last year, they made about 4,600 citizen contacts, issued about 823 citations. It recovered 25 stolen vehicles, issued 119 PR bonds and recovered over $109,000 in stolen merchandise and 13 weapons, 13 guns. Narcotics unit this last year seized about 6.6 pounds of fentanyl, one pound of heroin, 11 pounds of cocaine, 9.7 pounds of marijuana in illegal marijuana possession or grows, 30 pounds of methamphetamine and about, I don't know what, 0.05, not a whole lot of hallucinogens. Let's say that. This seizure over here in February is some great work that they did. Ended up seizing 3,500 grams of cocaine, some money, some firearms. The DEA Task Force, which is a component of our narcotics and Special Investigations Division, seized 82 pounds of fentanyl pills, half a, half a pound of fentanyl powder, seven pounds of heroin, 28 pounds of cocaine, a little bit of crack cocaine that really isn't as popular as it used to be, six and a half pounds of marijuana, some hash oil, 255 pounds of methamphetamine, 41 or little under half a pound of hallucinogens. And you can see the rest there. So some gang investigations that we did in 2023. We took 17 federal indictments up, which resulted in nine convictions with accumulative sentences of all those convictions of 140 years in prison. The good news on federal cases is they'll serve about 90% of that time, which means about 120 years those people will be in jail. We test-fired more than 1,000 firearms and collected nearly 5,000 shell casings, which were submitted to NIBINS, which is a evidence processing through the ATF. Code enforcement is also part of the police department and did an incredible job this last year in 2023. They issued 1,800 litter citations, 2,100 weed citations, 1,400 litter and removal and storage, handled 737 junk vehicles, handled 554 zoning complaints, 499 international property maintenance violations, and the list kind of goes on there. They issued last year 1,300 notices of violation, issued about 684 summonses related to those notices. So less than half of the individuals that receive a notice actually receive a summons and completed 1,800 investigations. I'd like to point out that that's with, I think last year they had nine total full-time employees doing all that work. They performed 231 litter abatements, 197 weed abatements and boarded up 59 buildings. They took 530, 540 tons of trash to the, to the dump and 1,500 tires, which is a lot of work. Now, a lot of that work is performed not only by our code enforcement officers, but our, by our abatement crews, which are primarily part-time employees. And I think we have 10 of those the last time I checked. We did just hire two full-time abatement supervisors. So hopefully we'll be able to do a little bit better or a little bit more with the addition of those two full-time employees. So our communications center, also a very vital part of our, of our department, handled 316,000 phone calls in 2023. That is a slight decrease of 4.8% in 2023, from 2022's numbers. 98,688 or 31% of those calls were 911 calls. In 2023, the communications calls for service by agency were as follows. The department handled, the police department handled 142,612 calls for service. The fire department, 26,227, and animal control, about 546. Now I point those out because they are, they do also utilize our communication center. So it's important to note that not all of the calls for service are directly related to the police department. I wanted to go back a little bit and talk about historically where Pueblo has been when it comes to part one violent crime. This is the data I was able to find going back to 1990. And in 2023, our part one crimes incidences, we had 1,373. The last year, 2022, we had 1,400. But the last year we had 1,300 part one violent crimes was in 1997, a year after I started with the police department. So we had a pretty significant dip. We did have in 2008, an increase to, I guess, I guess that is 1,300. I don't have my glasses on. But pretty much, except for that one blip, our crime has pretty much been going down or staying fairly steady until about 2020. And in 2020 is when we started having a lot of problems internally within, within our department and within our community and within our country related to COVID. The release of mass numbers of prisoners from Department of Corrections. A lot of changes in legislation started having a massive impact at that time. And not only that, the sentiment around the country related to law enforcement as a profession and the people doing the job drove out large numbers of officers, not only in our department, but across the country. So these are our part one property crimes. And really they've stayed fairly, fairly consistent. In 2012, it did go up a little bit. And we are, we are below the 2012 numbers for part one property crimes. Again, which includes like burglary, motor vehicle theft, theft from vehicles, that kind of thing. So. Calls for service could, are fairly consistent. Going back to 2011, we have seen, except for the COVID year of 2020, roughly an average increase of 2.8% per year. There are some years where it's more significant. And for example, in 2016, when you compare 2017 to 2016, there was a 9.4% increase in calls for service. But overall, we consistently, on average, go up about 2.8% a year over the last, going from 2013 to 2011. The calls to date so far, calls for service, we are looking at, if things stay consistent through the end of the year, the numbers I was looking at was January 1st through October 31st. We're looking at about a 3.8% increase, which is not far off of what our average increase is in calls for service per year. Our authorized strength, this is our authorized strength going all the way back to 1993. As you can see, we really didn't change much of our, despite the increase in calls for service over the years, we really haven't increased our authorized strength until 2018 with the passage of the public, the public safety sales tax. These are our personnel numbers. So at the end of 2023, we had 175 officers. The last time we have had that low number of officers was going back to 1994, when we had 171 working officers, or employed officers. So one of the questions that often gets asked is if, if we saw a decrease, and I think in, I think in 2023, the decrease in calls for service for patrol was about 5% in, in calls for service in 2023 compared to 2022. The question often is, is well, why, why are call times increasing? Well, the reason why call times are increasing is we're handling those calls with about 100. And I think in June of 1990, of 2023, I had 158 officers that could actually work, whether that was injuries, people in training or vacancies, we were down to 158 officers. For comparison, Greeley is a town of 109,000, which is 1,000 people less than we have. They handled, their entire department handled 73,000 calls for service last year. We handled 142,000 with the same number of officers they have. So that's how you end up with, even though numbers are increasing, they're in the training pipeline and it, they don't really add, they add value to our department, but they don't add work ability to our department until they complete their training, which is about 52 weeks by the time they go through the academy and through the PTO program. So when you're patrolling a community with two times the amount of calls as a city of nearly identical size with the same officers that they're handling that, that half, half load with, it causes an immense amount of pressure on the officers and it increases our response time. So if I, my point is a 5% reduction is great. And we're looking for all kinds of opportunities to reduce the workload on our officers to be more proactive. It's still an immense workload. So where are we at today? And this is as of the 10th of November. Our authorized strength is 230. We have one deputy chief position, which is frozen. We have an actual strength of actual bodies of 192. I have 22 in training. I have 11 that are injured or otherwise not working. And deployable personnel from officers to me is 159 people. So what are we doing about that? This is kind of an explanation of where we've been with recruiting since 2021. In 2021, we, we hired 18, 18 officers. Nine were hired in class 63, nine were hired in class 64. Seven of those are no longer with us. I'm sorry, six of those are no longer, or seven are no longer with us. Oh, hold on. Nine are no longer with us. Sorry. It's, it's late. It's been a long day. Nine are no longer with us. One of, one of those was fired, so about half of that class is not here. One of the questions I saw on a social media site, well, why, why are they leaving? Why is half the class leaving? Well, it's, it's hard to predict why people leave. A lot of people get into the profession not fully understanding what it's about, what it's going to entail, the workload that we have, and, and they leave for those reasons. Some of them are not able to complete the program, and rather than being fired, they resign so that they don't have a termination on their record. And some of them are removed from the program, either in training or in the PTO program, uh, or perhaps even uh while they're still on probation after the PTO program, uh, because of the uh, um, because of performance issues. So in two thousand twenty two, we hired a total of twenty six officers. Um, nine of those are, are no longer with us. In two thousand twenty three, we hired fourteen. Um, we had seven leave, um, for a variety of reasons. In two thousand twenty four, we've hired thirty four. Um, we have one that has left, um, uh, as a result, or four that have left as a result of termination. We have one that was injured and on light duty and is still on light duty as we speak. Um, and then we have eight that just graduated uh, uh, from the academy and are, are starting the PTO program now. We have five that are at the PCC Academy who will graduate December twelfth and go to the PTO program. And then we have uh eight that we just hired and started the academy actually today. So in two thousand twenty five, we also have, uh, we're still in the hiring process. We have three that we may send to the uh PCC Academy in January. And we have fourteen that have passed the interview, interview phase for the academy that's going to start in March. And uh, six, well, the applications have actually gone through. I think we have fourteen that uh are, have passed the test out of that sixty three. I, I might not be exact on that. That's the newer numbers. So this is the last slide. This shows a little bit of, of uh what we've done over the last uh three years with uh hiring and resignation, termination of, of recruits. Um, so with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure, I'm sure there are some.
Um, Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, um, and please don't take this personal. Um, I'm concerned about challenging some of the things that, when I, I look at different sites for different crime rates for Pueblo, and I pulled up several that are pretty close and um, some of the numbers alarm me when I see them according to what they're saying the crime rates are. You got eleven thou, you have at one thousand one hundred and forty eight assaults, uh, compared to the national level of two hundred and eighty two. Um, they have it listed as murders twenty five point eight, as opposed to the national level of six point one. Rape is nine, uh, hundred and sixty two point five versus forty point seven nationally, and robberies in reference is uh, three hundred and twenty one point four nationally is one thirty five point five. And the reason I'm bringing that up, a couple of months back or a month ago, you came in front of the dais, I mean, in front of us, and you said that you had to give us some not great news that if we were involved in armed robbery in progress, you might, these guys may not be able to get there in time. What do you mean by that? You said it on, you said it in council.
I'm not really sure I understand the question.
I'm concerned with the numbers that you're citing, and I, I don't know if that's in fact that people don't want to call in because they don't think they can get a response, and the numbers decreasing cause calls that they would normally call in, they're not making them anymore. So crime's going to actually decrease. So when you made the statement armed robbery in progress, if you have an armed robbery in progress at your home, we may not be able to get to you in time. What did you mean by that?
I don't recall saying that. Um, but what I will tell you is we can respond to calls as we have officers available. Um, as far as people not calling to report crimes, I don't know any way I could ever prove that that is or is not happening. I can't prove something that doesn't occur to me, and if you don't call, I can't prove you didn't call. What I will say is what is indicative is over the last, I think, uh, with the exception of two thousand twenty, over the last twenty three years or, or thirteen years, our calls have increased at a consistent rate of about two point eight percent per year. This year, our calls are increasing at three point eight percent thus far this year, which indicates to me people are calling us when they have crime issues. Um, now, what I will tell you is we're no different than any other department in the country, whereas we can only respond to calls given the call load, given the type of call, and given the manpower that we have available to respond to calls for service. Um, and I don't know of any department that would tell you otherwise. What I will tell you is that the men and women of the Pueblo Police Department are going to get to your call if it's an armed robbery, if it's a shooting, if it's a stabbing, if it's a beat down, whatever you want to uh indicate as quickly as they humanly can. And those calls are what we call a priority one call, and our priority one response time, I believe on that slide, was thirteen minutes.
What's your protocol issues that when you call in to report a crime, you said it was a new protocol. What does that mean? When I called in to find information about this, they said, well, there's a new protocol in place for when you call in a crime. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, yeah, there, there is a message if you call our non-emergency number that tells you how to file certain reports online to di- direct those calls away from our, our dispatch center. Um, there are certain types of calls that are, that qualify for that. Um, but if you call nine one one, they call straight into the, to the communication center. And if you're getting robbed, uh, most of the time people call nine one one for those incidents.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chief, what, when and what time of day do you have the highest call rate?
I don't have that data in front of me. However, usually at around ten AM, they, our call load starts to increase quite a bit, and it runs at, at a pretty high level till about uh one or two in the morning.
Okay. I had a situation occur in my district, actually, and it involved me. Been about a month ago, maybe a little longer. It was in the evening, and uh, it was, it was a situation where I was sitting with the door open, and I could see down the street. I do that intentionally. It's kind of calming to some, in some instances to me. You know, and, and down, down the street, we're talking about Bradford, comes this woman at eleven o'clock at night, young woman, as a matter of fact. She turns off of, of, off of Bradford onto River Street and goes and parks herself under a tree. Um, right adjacent to the house, to my house. I watched and, 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 and observed and, and kept the door open about. I called the, the nine one one, not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, but five times. About eleventh, well, about one o'clock in the morning, she started to get up to leave again, and I might be a little bit off of my time of her leaving, going down the street, and I called, I, 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 I called out to her and asked her to come back. I was concerned about her. That's, that's a tough area. And so we got her up, got her, got a blanket for her because it was kind of chilly, and we waited till about two o'clock in the morning before somebody came. Again, I don't know how many officers you have on, on duty at that time of the day or evening. I've done two ride-alongs with, with, with the department, uh, morning and, and, and afternoon shift, been some time back. But is it a fact that we're, we're, we have less officers on duty at night? And we do during the day? What, what's, what's the situation there?
No, um, watch two, which is our uh, uh, mid-watch, um, has more officers uh, uh, assigned to it or than the other two watches do. Um, but I mean, the reality of it is oftentimes we're running at minimum staffing, which is uh eight officers. And uh, we'll have four on each side of town. There is an overlap between uh noon and ten PM from watch one. Um, and then there's an overlap from ten PM to two for watch three or four, which is our graveyard shift. So at, at, at certain times of day, we will have more than the eight officers. We'll have up to sixteen officers working. Um, but again, I mean, wh- what, what is, what is hard for me to relate in words, and I encourage anybody that wants to, to come do a ride along and see exactly what our officers face, is how many calls for service, right now, at the slow time of the year, we are averaging six calls for service an hour, six an hour, with eight people working a shift. Um, so, and, and no disrespect, but a person sitting under a tree is not going to reach a level where we're going to break officers away from responding to robberies, uh, shootings, shots fired calls. Uh, you know, those kinds of things to send an officer to that, to that situation, and I understand why you would call in that situation. But what we have to do is look at where our priorities are and where the priority levels are. And if you had called and said that she was bleeding, that she was uh injured from an accident, that she had been shot or stabbed or beat up, that would have changed the level of priority i- if you would have called. But I can sit here and tell you all day long how busy we are. And if you don't believe me, there's nothing I can do, but the proof's in the pudding. And I'll tell you, I'll challenge anybody that thinks that our officers are sitting around doing nothing to come out and do a ride along and see exactly what they do every day of the week. Because the last thing my cops are doing is sitting around doing nothing.
I don't think I'm saying that. I'm, I'm not saying that.
I'm not suggesting you are, but there are those who do.
Okay. The second thing I, I want to do is I want to compliment Captain Anderson and Sergeant Jason Smith, because they've helped us with a very difficult situation on the east side, which has been re- resolved to the, to, to, to a point where we've cleaned out an area with high crime. We're talking drugs, et cetera. And they were very, very, very helpful. It, it wouldn't have been possible without them and, and their efforts in your department in that particular situation. So
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
It's, 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 it's been, it's, it's been very special in, in, in the last week to, to, to know that that's happened. We cleaned out a, a drug-infested area as a result of their efforts. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation, Chief. Um, I have a couple of questions. So how long is your average, for, so when you say that you have six calls per hour, how long is the average call once they get there?
It just depends on what, what the call is, to be honest with you. Some calls, for example, uh, in, maybe in, just for instance, the, the call that Counselor La- uh, Latino was referencing, we've had seventeen murders this year. I'm not saying that this happened the day you called, but if we had a murder that day or that time period, we're going to tie up probably seven or eight cops on that call for hours.
Okay.
Hours. Now, there are other calls we respond to that the officers can clear that call up in a matter of a few minutes, issue a citation, give some advice. You know, ask somebody to stop doing whatever it is they're doing, and they can be on their way. The other thing that isn't really tracked, and I didn't, I didn't bring out here, is the number of times that our uh officers have had to deal, deal with people barricaded with weapons in houses. We had an incident over on Palmer across from a school where we had probably ten officers and about another fifteen SWAT officers tied up on that for about four hours or five hours. And that takes an immense amount of time. It takes an immense amount of effort because what we try to do is try to safely resolve those incidents, even when people act uh, in that unruly of a way, and that individual had actually fired a gun off outside the house or, or threw a gun. I can't remember which. Uh, I think there was two different incidences with that same individual. But uh, so those calls taken a, in the or, inordinate amount of time, resources, manpower. We're pulling detectives off the, off of their cases to go out there and help to, so we can relieve patrolmen to go back out on the street. And, and I can tell you that not only me as the chief, but my uh, my deputy chiefs and my watch commanders spend all their time during those things, looking at how we can free people up to go handle other calls for service. I have a whiteboard in my office. I challenge, I, 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 I invite anybody that wants to, to uh, on the council to come, come look at it. It has on there a number of officers that I, I think are leaving, number of officers that we've hired, number of officers that are injured and how long they're going to be out, number of, of, of uh, uh, people in the training pipeline. Um, every single day, I sit down and look at that and see where I can rob from Peter to pay Paul so that we can do the job that we need to do. I, I, and the officers who work for me are one hundred percent committed to the safety of this community. And, and I guess I'm a little bit defensive, and I don't, I don't mean to be, but when, when my cops are busting their tail and we drop part one crime, um, I think it was thirteen percent last year, and I get told, well, people aren't calling, that's why crime's down, or, you know, you guys are responding too slow, or all this and that and the other thing about how we're not doing our part. I'm going to tell you right now that men and women of the Pueblo Police Department are killing themselves to make this a better community. And just today, we had a case where one of my cops, a year and a half ago, got shot, went to trial, and they couldn't even see fit to convict the person that did it. And, and then we come here, or not just here, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we hear about how we're not doing enough. I got cops taking bullets and bleeding for this community. We are very serious about what we do, deadly serious. This is in a game. I don't take it as a game. I take my job very seriously. And I know the chiefs prior to me did as well. And what infuriates me is when they pass legislation that makes my job impossible to do. When they pass legislation that takes away qualified immunity for my cops. I get cops shot, I get cops hurt on the job, I get cops that have to retire because of that. And then we can't hire people because who would want to do a job where you get shot and we can't even convict the person that did it? Where you lower crime and you're told you didn't do anything, it's because nobody's calling. I push my cops to be proactive to the point where some of them don't want to work for me anymore. And now it's not enough. I'm telling you right now, the men and women of the Pueblo Police Department deserve better. We put out, we are killing ourselves to make this a better community. And, and I'm sorry, it's, it's been a really bad day after I found out about that trial, and I don't mean to be disrespectful. You have every right to question me. I'm the chief. I should stand up here and answer these questions, and I appreciate them. But it is a little bit, a little bit hard to handle sometimes when you have days like today. So I want to apologize to the council. I had not come, you have every right to ask me the questions you want to ask me, and I should stand here and answer them, and if I can't, you ought to find another chief. But we are doing the very best that we can.
Well, I want to follow that. Geez Louise, Chief. Um, I hear you. I appreciate everything that you do and your men and women do. Let's talk about something positive. What is your office doing to retain the brilliant men and women of the police department? I know you got some, some cool news.
Yeah, well, first off, I, I would like to give council some credit for helping me retain some cops. Uh, we, we, we uh got a really good raise for our officers. Um, council approved the quartermaster system that allows our officers not to have to pay for their uniforms anymore. And we just got approved for a grant for two hundred thousand dollars that will help us subsidize uh, uh childcare for our officers, which I think will also help with retention, uh, maybe help with some mobility for our officers that maybe can work in different areas than they could have before. Um, and also perhaps uh, uh, bring light to our community and what we have to offer and, and attract officers to come work for us.
Yeah, especially, um, because I know, I know that your shifts and your roll calls are, you know, around the clock, and it's hard to find those slots at abnormal hours. So I'm, I, I'm really hopeful that, um, and I think it's cool that your officers champion that. I think that that just goes to show, you know, with, when they're speaking of like, hey, this can help a lot. I'm really excited for it. So.
I would like to also give Sergeant Antoinette Ramos a lot of credit for that because she's the one that put on a lot of the work and, and Luann Martinez as well.
Brilliant. Well, I appreciate everything that you do, Chief.
Thank you.
I appreciate what your men and women do for keeping us safe.
Thanks.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, the issues, and again, I, I hope you don't take things personally, but in reference to law enforcement, just the very nature of law enforcement onto its own, it's very territorial, number one. Um, it lacks creativity and it lacks imagination. So that's, that's not central to you. It's central to law enforcement all across the board. So in reference to trying to acquire more officers that are qualified and can handle a lot of these different issues, have, you've seen a reduction in the um, background of some of these off, some of these recruits. You've gone from, if I believe, that once it was a four-year degree down to now, if I'm, if I'm correct on this, is a, a, a degree that you can get just past the high school level. Is that harming you in any way, or is it, is it holding your, your agency back? Um, is there any way to get back to where you have more criteria for officers to apply? I mean, can you get there or no?
Well, uh, you know, first off, I, I do take uh, exception to the, to the idea that there's a lack of creativity in our profession. I think we have been very creative over the years, dealing with a variety of situations. But what, what I will tell you is, uh, we, we live in a community where not very many people have the opportunity to go to college. Um, some do for sure, but we have a lot of disadvantaged uh, uh, individuals in our community who can't attend college. I think as the chief of police and speaking as someone who's not a native Puebloan, I think my job is to try to hire Pueblo people to work in Pueblo as police officers. And if we make it so difficult for our local kids to come work for us because we require a four-year degree, then I think, um, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. then I think, um, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. I think we're not being open to a lot of the positive, um, um, things that we gain from hiring, uh, people in Pueblo that don't have a four-year education. So that, that's my take on it. Uh, what I will tell you, I've been a cop for 31 years. When I got hired, I had a high school diploma. I'm sitting here as the chief of police with a master's degree in criminal justice. And, and certainly I had to work a lot while I was as a cop to, to, to accomplish that. But I, we also as a, as a city encourage, uh, education through the city's reimbursement. So there's opportunities to bring children or, I'm, I'm talking like an old person now, bring young adults in, uh, to work in our profession and, and gain an education while they're here working for us. I'll be honest with you. I don't, I don't think you need a college degree to be a cop. I think that's a fallacy. I think, uh, what we need is, is as kids to have a work ethic, a drive and, and a little bit of common sense and, and they'll make a darn good cop. What I will tell you though is, uh, there's a report that just came out today from International Association of Chiefs of Police on survey results regarding recruitment and retention, uh, across the country. Um, in seventy percent of, of responding departments and, and that's 1,158 departments that responded are, are having more difficulty now than they were five years ago in recruiting. Some of the issues that they talk about are, uh, um, on average responding agencies were staffed at approximately ninety-one percent of their authorized staffing levels, thus operating with a deficit of nearly 10%. If you don't take out the people in training, if you don't take out the injured people and you use our 192 number, we're at sixteen point five percent below staffing. Which is what these guys have to be. I, I, I have to believe that this ninety-one percent that, that of their authorized strength includes their injured and those in training. What I will tell you is I spoke with the chief of Arvada, uh, Ed Brady, a couple, a couple of days ago, maybe late last week. And Arvada's at, at, uh, I think it was 12.4% vacancy rate. So I mean, we're not, what my point is, we're not any different than any other department around the country. What I will submit, and I, I, I don't care if people get tired of hearing me say it or not. You work in a state where they take away qualified immunity, it's going to be harder for us to fill our positions. It's just that, it's just that simple. And this survey that if you guys want, I can certainly email to you guys, also talks about the impacts of things like qualified immunity. And it's interesting, I had somebody ask me, uh, a couple of weeks ago about if we could lower the starting age to below 21. Well, we can't. It's a, it's a state law that has to be 21. I think it's a well thought out state law. I don't know that, um, eighteen-year-olds ought to be doing police work. But we do have the CSO program, which allows us to hire eighteen-year-olds, uh, to, to work in the CSO program. And we've actually seen a number of those CSOs apply to become full-time officers. So I don't know if I answered your question, um, counselor, but, um, I, I think we, we have to, to at some extent, recruit our community. And, and I don't know what the percentage is, but I do know that it's not a super high percentage of, of Pueblans that go on to, to college. Um, and, and I don't, I'm not judging. I don't think there's a right or wrong there. But I, if, if all I require is four-year degree, I'm cutting out a lot of people in this community that would make great officers.
That's not what I'm saying. Um, I'd just like to know in reference to changing the, what people think about law enforcement as a profession. At what grade level are we exposing our younger people as they're coming through elementary school or high school? What level do you start exposing them to this as a possible career for them as they get older?
Well, I think in our community, we have SROs in the, uh, um, in the grade school and middle school level. So they, they obviously have an opportunity to speak with, with, uh, SROs there. We used to, and I don't know honestly if we've done it lately. We used to be able to go into the District 60 high schools and have conversations about job opportunities. We, I used to teach a narcotics section, uh, in the health class, uh, many years ago. But, uh, I also do know that District 70 has a law enforcement program at Pueblo West High School that, that we have some officers involved in that. We're, we're more than happy to partner with D60 in any way we can. But, but the, the problem is, and, and that's a really good question, uh, counselor, but the problem is it's not, it's not some, changing the national narrative on our profession is something that we have had great difficulty as a profession doing. When we have so many people on the outside that are, that are pushing against us. Um, and we have legislation again that has passed and I'm going to beat that drum as, probably till I retire or die. That, that makes it so much more difficult. And, and I, and I just have to point to what happened today. Again, I just don't understand. And I can't get into all the facts, but given the facts as I know them, I cannot understand how we get in a, a, a hung jury on an event where an officer took two bullets to his body, one to his shoulder and one to his vest, thank God. Cause that one that did, that hit his vest, if it would have missed, it would have been, it would have been really ugly. And so, look, our profession has had faults. We have not always got it right. But we have done an enormous amount of work, not only here in Pueblo, but across the country, trying to change our image and how we do our job. And I think we have been very successful. When you see events like what happened at the University of Georgia game and they, everybody's wanting to lambaste the cops, when people just don't do what they're told, when, when they're countered by police officers and the police officers have to use force in a highly dynamic situation, that's going to make it hard for us to hire cops. Officers have the right to, to defend themselves. They also have the right to, they, they have to enforce the law. And if we make it to where people don't, it convolutes stuff and it makes it harder for people to want to come do this job. It just does.
I think this council has been behind you, President Aliff. And we had discussed about how much do you actually need so we can help, help you a little bit? And I don't think we've ever denied, uh, you, and I hope you understand that we're trying our best. But this is, a lot of this stuff is tied to how we do as a community. When you look at crime stats and people are moving here and the first thing that they do is pull up crime stats. When they see something like, whether it's accurate or not, when you see statistics like eighty percent, eighty-six percent increase in homicides, you can argue with that if you want, but I saw it. How does that translate into people that want to come to Pueblo?
Well, well, that's actually true. It's actually low. It's almost 100% increase in homicides the last three years. So I'm, I'm not here to argue with you. What I will say is some of those stats though are, are skewed. And what I will tell you is that the stats we put out are the stats that we have. I'm not going to say we had thirteen murders when we had twenty-three. I'm not going to say we had eleven hundred assaults when we had two thousand. I, I, I have much more integrity than that. Um, we're going to put out exactly what we have. And, and what, again, when you look at the chart historically over what we've had crime wise, and I'd be happy to go back to it, you're looking at the real increase started in 2020. And there's a lot of things that happened in 2020. George Floyd, COVID, DOC letting people out. Uh, I, I'll give you an example today. Uh, I was talking about it earlier. We had a guy that in 2020 was sentenced to a twelve years, twelve-year prison sentence for distributing narcotics. Twenty twenty. I just got an email today that he's being released back into our community. He hasn't even served fifty percent of his time, not even fifty percent. How, how do you expect us to combat crime when those individuals come back into our community? And they've not even served forty percent of their time. And more and more people from outside of our community are now paroling into our community. I, I don't know exactly. We're trying to get to the bottom of what that is, whether that's related to gang membership, whether that's something else. I don't know. But, uh, we're seeing more and more people paroling back into Pueblo from other, where they were sentenced in other communities. So I, I, I take your point, but I want to assure you that, uh, the, the investigators and the patrolmen that I have working for, for me, working for this city are doing everything we can to address that very issue that you're talking about. Because I agree with you. We need to lower crime. I'm not saying I'm happy with these numbers and I don't think my men and women are either. But we're moving in the right direction. And we're also seeing so far this year, a seven percent decrease in part one crime. And if people aren't calling me, here's what I'll tell them. Call me. I mean, I can't do anything if you don't call me. I can't track it if you don't call me. I can't say it happened if you didn't call me. We're not opposed to taking calls.
Just make one last comment. Um, what do you think about the fact that we have felony only jail? I, I look at that thing in terms of, wait a second. So if there are high misdemeanor crimes and there's no facilities to bring those folks to and they get away with, you know, with a fine or violation, doesn't that kind of like the, uh, you may have an opportunity to stop that behavior right there with the jail term and I don't, I'm just not pro jail. I'm just saying, taking that away doesn't make your job any easier, does it?
No. And, and you know, I have a lot of respect for Sheriff Lucero. Uh, and I don't understand fully the, uh, the problems that he has or the challenges he faces in the jail. But what I will tell you is putting people that commit crimes in jail is what needs to happen. Whether that's a municipal offense, whether that's a misdemeanor offense, or whether that's a felony offense. I don't know how to reconcile that, but you will never convince me as a thirty-one-year officer that not taking people to jail lowers crime.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores, did you have something?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I saw the report. I've often maintained that Colorado Springs probably has the highest crime rate in the state of Colorado because their reporting of their crime does not include the military. And they have, I, I don't know. I mean, it's a huge population with Fort Carson, Peterson, Air Force Base, all of those military facilities. So I understand, uh, how numbers can be manipulated. And I think Colorado Springs does a good job of that. Uh, and it looks a lot better than we do, but, um, that, that's, I was just trying to defend your point and I think it's, it's well received. Our, I, I noticed the, um, it was a significant amount of fentanyl that was confiscated. Uh, I would imagine that six hundred, what was the number? Six hundred and? I'm trying to find it here. Six point six pounds of fentanyl. That's gotta be significant. Are you relegated to also, uh, translating into how many deaths that could have occurred or is that, is that a responsibility of someone else? Like the coroner or the?
You know, we, I don't think we really have done that. The coroner wouldn't take that weight, uh, for example, and tell me how many. I think the, uh, I, I think, and, and please don't quote me on this. I've been out of the narcotics world for a while. But I think I read somewhere that one, one nanogram of fentanyl can be enough to kill a person. I don't, I, I wasn't, I'm a cop. I wasn't very good at math. But, um, I think that's, uh, six hundred and sixty thousand nanograms or something like that. I mean, I don't even want to venture to guess. Uh, actually that would not be, it'd be, it'd be probably thirty million, uh, nanograms. Right. Three billion? What is that we said? Three million? I don't know. It's, it's a lot. It's gonna, it's gonna, that amount could kill a significant number of individuals for sure. And what, what's striking though, when you look at that is our DEA task force agent seized eighty-two pounds of fentanyl pills. And that's just, uh, that's just on cases they worked in Southern Colorado. That's not all in Pueblo, to be clear. But that's, that's the, the region that we're working, that we're living in.
My last question had to do with shoplifting. I, I noticed that the, the environment in grocery stores at Walmart, at TJ Maxx, Raw. I mean, they've kind of changed the way they now handle, uh, shoplifting. Uh, I, I, I think they're doing a much better job. And I'm wondering if you've seen, uh, the effect of what they're now doing, the, the actual retail stores, what they're doing to protect themselves, whether you think that's made a difference in the shoplifting, uh, that's going on in Pueblo?
I think it's made some difference, but if you'll look up there, larceny and theft is where that would be. And we're, we're, um, this is 2023's numbers and we were down significantly in 23. We've only, I, if, if memory serves, this year so far, we have only reduced part one crime from that number. I think it's one percent. So it's not a significant amount, uh, this year, um, compared to 2023. But what I will say is I think there's a couple of things that, that have happened is those changes, that where they're locking certain things up, which makes it a lot more inconvenient for all of us. The cameras in the parking lots, I think have helped somewhat. And you'll notice that some of the, the real, real retailers have those. Another significant impact on those thefts in 2023 was our dice team. Our dice team seized a significant amount of, of stolen merchandise and made a lot of arrests. The retailers have their direct numbers. So they're able to respond up there because that's their job is to do that kind of thing. Now, it to be clear, if we have an armed robbery that's holding, they're not going to go up there and deal with the shoplifter. But if they're doing other things, they can go up there and deal with those. And we've gotten quite a bit of, well, they have gotten quite a bit of recognition for the work that they do related to that theft from the regional managers and the district managers and the home offices of a lot of those big box retailers, um, as well as some of the impact on our local retailers. So I think it's a team effort.
Thanks.
Thank you.
President Aliff?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that report. I mean, you got a, you got a heck of a job because you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. But congratulations on at least that our numbers are going to the negative. That's a, that's a fantastic thing. You know, there's nothing worse than sitting here and looking at your, uh, your, your worst offenses and they're skyrocketing. And then you have a, a, another problem to talk about. I think the community, there, there's really a disconnect between the administration and the way that a city council sees things. Because, you know, people call us and as soon as something happens, boy, I'm going to gripe about that, get a phone call. The police never came. The police did this, police did that. You know, we don't, we have no idea what happened. But obviously the perception, the perception of the person who called was that somewhere, somehow the ball got dropped. And, uh, uh, they were upset about that. I'm going to go back to the specific thing of the huge problem within our, our city over several years now has been personnel and being able to get officers, right? I mean, that's, the mayor's done a fantastic job of putting in, uh, policies and city council has approved dollars and, uh, we're making headway in that area. But I'm going to go back to what I, 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 I talked about a few months ago of saying, we have this tool of the CSOs that is such a powerful tool to free up and allow police officers to be police officers. And all of these things that people are, are, the perception of people not getting taken care of, if they're getting taken care of by the CSO officers, I think they're happy. And I'll give you a perfect example. When, when our company went through the, the, the time when we had all the cars stolen and all the catalytic converters stolen and we just lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in a short period of time. We never felt that we were, were getting the type of service that we thought we deserved, right? Whether we got it or we didn't, our perception was that we didn't get it. And we worked through that. Uh, your department came through, did some good things and, and we went down the road. But then I want to come to just a few weeks ago when many, uh, businesses downtown got their windows shot out. When we came to work that morning, our windows are shot out. We make the phone call and I had gotten to work and it wasn't fifteen minutes. Here's a CSO officer taking a report, getting the video, getting everything, uh, squared away and it happened immediately. And we were very, very impressed because of the prompt response and the thoroughness of the CSO officer and it just, it was just good. We didn't need a, a sworn gun-totin' police officer. They're investigating our windows getting shot out, but we did need service and we got service quickly. So all I'm saying, and I hope as we move forward in this, this process, is that we just utilize this CSO officer, put it on steroids and get more and more CSOs to free up. If we're only going to be, we can't fix the problems that you're talking about as a city council. We cannot change legislation. We can't change juries. We can't change district attorneys. We can't do any of that. But what we can do is be supportive of our police department with these innovative ways. with these innovative ways of policing where you bring in civilians to do some of this work that the police officers have been doing traditionally forever and ever and ever, but they really didn't need to do, do when it comes to reports and and all the things that you use them for. We've gone through that a hundred times. But if we know we're not, it's going to be this constant battle to get to two hundred and twenty sworn officers, get to two hundred, to a hundred and eighty, a hundred and seventy-five. Why on earth we're not capitalizing more on the CSOs is, is beyond me and I, I, I just hope as we move forward that there's, there's hopefully your department and, and the administration just latches onto that and runs with it. And I think that, that city council would be super supportive of that because we know what it means to us and our constituents that they get service like that and you know, statistics are statistics, they're gonna go up and down, we can't control the thugs, we can't control the the craziness that goes on out there, but what we can, can control is the service that the, that the citizens get by our police department. And that, that's what I personally think we should work on and uh, I would be very supportive of.
Well, I, I absolutely agree. Um, the CSO program is an incredible program. Um, the uh, we, the mayor and I did have uh, several in-depth conversations uh, through the budget process about increasing the size of the CSO program, but with the budget, we just wasn't possible this year. That is something that we have on the horizon, I think, and as we move into the future, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but that was the impression I had from the conversations that I had with her. Um, I, I do want to, you said something and I want to make sure I'm clear on this one point. My, my complaint about the trial, the DA, the DA's office, Caleb Bovee and, and Tony Marzalis did an absolutely phenomenal job of presenting a case. Uh, and so I just want to make sure that they don't, they don't get the impression I didn't think they did a, a, a good job because they, they absolutely put their heart and soul into that case. But your, your point about the CSOs is, is, is spot on. That's why we created the program. Um, and, and I'm absolutely in favor of expanding the program. Um, I just, uh, in conversations with the mayor with the budget this year, that just wasn't possible.
Uh, Mr. Latino? Do you have a question?
Yes, I just, again, please, uh, I can't emphasize enough how great it was, the work that was done by the Narcotics Division on the east side. I mean, unbelievable, Captain Anderson and Sergeant Smith and their, and their, their crew. Unbelievable. We got some really great things done there in the last two weeks. I mean, I'm really excited. People can walk the streets and, 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 and feel safe in, in, in a lot of areas now as a result of what they did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I know you said that.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Martinez.
Chief, do we, so do we pay all of the um, new recruits when they're in um, the academy?
Yes, ma'am. If they're hired by us, we do. We also uh, have started a program, again, thanks to Mayor Graham, where we're able to um, hire people who are unsponsored in the academy while they're still in the academy and then we start paying them while they're in the academy so they don't, they don't go work somewhere else.
Say that again.
So a- at the community college level, it's possible to go to a police academy and not have been hired by an agency.
Okay.
And so we call those people unsponsored. Um, the people that we hire and send to PCC, for example, are sponsored recruits because they're, they, they, they're, they're our hire. Um, so what we have the ability to do now is go out to like Pike's Peak uh, State College, I, whatever they are now. PCC, uh, Lahana, up in Denver to the community colleges, and if somebody isn't hired by an agency, we can recruit them if they pass through our process, then we will start paying them while they're still in the academy.
How many of those off the top of your head can you think of this year?
Not one yet. It, it, a lot of times there's reasons why their people are unsponsored, unfortunately, but.
That's innovative thinking though.
Yeah, we're, we're trying. So, thank you.
Councilor Boston.
Oh yeah, I'd just like to start off by saying thank you for everything you and your entire staff does. You guys do great work in this town. Um, a couple of comments just on some of the things people said. Uh, according to Rogers data over here, point zero zero two grams results in certain deaths, so that would be one point six five million deaths prevented. Um, thank you. Also on top of those six calls per hour, they're also actively policing. I know on my ride along, we had a guy almost run over two kids on a bike that had to stop everything, pull him over. No, he had fake plates from a different car, no driver's license, tons of things. That call ended up, you know, lasting at least an hour. More calls build up as that happens. Uh, when it comes to creativity, Real Time Crime Center seems pretty creative to me. Um, hopefully that can, can continue to grow and result in better things. And I'd like to give a special thanks to the dice team. I know they did a ton of work helping me out with my specific issues. And um, you know, when I was first getting involved, so uh, I just thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. It's a difficult time, you know, sign of the times, you know, I noticed that um, since we've had a uh, change in administration, we're more actively talking about what state legislation has been doing to us. We didn't do that when I first came onto council. That was kind of taboo, you couldn't talk about it. I'm glad that, you know, you're able to talk about it, um, and that, you know, it's more public awareness because it's in the vote is what changes it, you know? Um, we can't, if we can't change the state legislation, we're continued to be going down this route and um, it's not serving our community well. And unfortunately, you're caught up in the m- dealing with the mess of that and the outcome of that, but thank you for your honesty and, and coming forward and being open to um, hearing what the community has to say and, and doing your job.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
All right. We're gonna move on to the next subject and that is going to be the bathhouse um, bid. And we're gonna be hearing from Mr. Hayes, uh, Mr. Meyer and Amy um, from HGF Architects. Welcome, guys.
Good evening. Members of council, Mayor Graham, uh, we're gonna, tonight we're gonna talk about the tennis court restroom facility again and uh, we recently got beds back, I'm sure you've heard, they came in overbid our estimate and so um, we're gonna kind of talk to you tonight, why we think it came in, the price it came in as, and uh, maybe some solutions on how to come up with that one one point three deficit that we need to come up with. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amy. Amy Herdick-Smith is architect, been on the, uh, been working on the project for over a year and I'll let her kind of go through her synopsis.
Uh, thank you, Council for having uh, to talk about this. Um, also just wanted to um, say with the, I enjoyed the sustainability presentation earlier as um, we've done a lot of um, sustainable buildings in, in such as uh, the health department, um, pause animal shelter and look forward to see more as well as this building is uh, programmed to be net zero. So um, also with the CHIPS program, uh, you should expect two high schools to achieve that. Um, but talking about this, um, where we are on bids, so let me go through where, where our analysis of where we think the numbers came in. Um, I looked at the various divisions from the different contractors and they were kind of um, all over the place, meaning that uh, they probably did have a little difficulty getting uh, good sub-numbers for this project, maybe doing, due to the timing, I'm not sure. Um, we're also gonna identify uh, additional scope that has happened since we first talked about the project back in twenty twenty-three. Um, we're gonna identify inflation that's applying to the current bidding, we believe, and um, talk about um, you know, uh, similar projects and, and a historic project that uh, has helical peers in addition that we have been working on as a comparison. So um, first of all, we gave an OPC back in July of twenty twenty-four after doing some design work um, uh, to the Parks Department. And at that time, we believed we were at uh, two million for construction of the project. Um, then we show what the official bids for the project were um, between Spire Houston and Ark Valley. You can see those totals. Um, so as I delve into the numbers and uh, studied current market, um, there were additional scope added to the building as we were designing it. Shade is an issue for the tennis court area, so we asked to put a, a big shade structure on the east side of the building, which added four hundred square foot of canopy. Um, we also, because of the soils report that we just received in June of this year, um, determined that we needed to affect a lot larger area and replace a lot more of the concrete uh, to help with ADA. The building, the new building would be a foot and a half higher than the existing building and meaning it would be three feet out of the water, which the existing building right now sits three feet in the water in the lower basement. So um, the water depth is at six feet from the existing finished floor level and we wanted to make sure the new building and crawl space with all the plumbing area was out of that. So we did raise and to help with some ADA around the existing site. Um, in addition to that, added landscaping because we are affecting more areas. Uh, we also talked about the sustainability of the building and after we surveyed the existing electrical of the building, it was found that we only had um, single-phase service adjacent to the building and uh, three-phase was in the street, but it was further away. So we determined that to make the building environmentally um, sustainable, we would shift to the VRF system, which would reduce the energy usage of the building enough to be able to keep the building single-phased as opposed to having to go to a three-phase and having the expensive cost of adding infrastructure for the three-phase system. Um, we've seen payback on those VRF systems. Um, anticipating energy models usually suggest within three to five years, you get a payback by doing that VRF system as opposed to a gas furnace simple type system. Uh, all the electric twenty twenty-three NEC was adopted right in, I believe, July first from the building department. So we had to adjust and add for those code requirements. Um, so it'll make the building more sustainable, but it did add costs. Um, there, what uh, we expected to have some increases from the soil uh, report from the OPC, but once we got the soils report and had zero pressure um, tests from the CTL, meaning when they dropped the hammer, it dropped eighteen inches into the ground just adjacent to the existing building, so there's no the existing um, soil has no upward pressure. So once we discovered that, we determined we would have to um, excavate a larger area to uh, um, work with that because the existing soil is in really bad condition due to the water infiltration on the existing building. After we delve into the division numbers, uh, we believe the total additional of scope for adding all this was three hundred and eighty-six thousand. Um, also other regulations that have affected um, inflation is um, materials costs, there's been quite a bit of inflation just since July of twenty twenty-four this year. So a lot of times when we're estimating building, we're kind of, you know, estimating from the past, um, trying to see what the future is, but fortunately, none of us have a crystal ball to determine what those numbers are. So um, one of the other things that affect, you know, our clean air um, enforcement of pollution, which is great, but it also is gonna cost a little more because now all those cement plants have to uh, are either fined or they have to um, do some mitigation for the air pollution that they were, that they have, and so that's really doubled the price of cement and it's really made concrete go up quite a bit. I believe there's only one plant in Colorado that meets those current requirements. Um, and none of our local ones quite meet that. Uh, total recent cost of increase from inflation, we believe, is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Um, this, I think this chart kind of shows that well. Uh, April is where the, the really steep increase be- begins from April to September. Uh, this is current construction um, sites on what they're seeing and so the, I believe the bids reflect that. And in addition to um, that, we also have uh, charts from Gypsum and um, uh, let's see, Steel, we have the Steel and Gypsum charts along with uh, notation from uh, lumber that just in the past month, it has gone up nine percent and um, lumber can has gone up twenty percent so far this year. So if we took the, my original OPC numbers and modified them with the inflation prices as well as they added scope, then I got to two point six, um, you know, the low bidder was at two point seven. But I, but one of the things I see is I was looking at current construction prices. They have to buy their materials in twenty twenty-five, so I'm guessing that a lot of the contractors put a safety factor of not knowing where inflation is going as they buy those materials in the next year. So um, that's why I believe that number is higher than just using today's numbers. Um, some of the other materials that we have put into the building that we think there's a higher cost than, than probably what should be there is uh, Dekton. We're using a high compression porcelain tile in the building because we know this building has to um, last for a long time and these are large format tile. No one in Pueblo has put those in yet. They, they're putting them in all over Denver on exterior buildings and interior. They are frostproof. Um, we had a sample and you could uh, you could light them on fire, you could not scratch it with a key. So we thought this would be um, something perfect for bathrooms for this type of facility that have high use. So um, that product is uh, six dollars a square foot and uh, the installation numbers that we saw on it were, were high and I think that's just because no one's ever put that material in yet. So um, that's just one of the things we had done on the project to try to make it long and sustainable. Uh, and then another comparison of an existing project and where those costs have gone, we're working on a historic building in Trinidad called Fort Wooton. Um, it has several buildings for the Veterans Council. Um, one of them is a five thousand square foot building that um, is a, also a WPA building and it is um, needing helical peers to keep it from uh, its structure from deteriorating as it is kind of sliding down the hill a little bit. So we need to um, sustain the building and those costs um, were coming in from a current contractor projecting to be five thousand per helical pier um, which would be twenty twenty-five's cost. So we had upped our OPC to four thousand and for a total of two hundred thousand to stabilize this building. But that's not just the only work that you would have to do to stabilize an existing horse historical building. You would also have to um, to dig around the building, hire an archaeologist to do check the soil, digging around the building, adding the concrete and such. And just repairing the cracks and foundation of a building of five thousand square feet is estimating to cost right now nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Uh, is the estimated cost to do that work. So just kind of, kind of pair some what kind of foundation issues we're dealing with in this area. And those are examples of showing the details and how, how we are putting the new concrete and the helical peers to pin the building. Uh, this is just a picture of that building to compare WPA historic building. So finally, um, the only thing that um, we really tried to keep minimal use of material that's longstanding, we have concrete floors, drywall, um, we have added some um, nice paneling to uh, represent the, the bathhouse that was in the area, so that's kind of one of the cost increases. And um, we looked at value engineering, if we didn't use the existing stone and recondition it, we could probably save thirty thousand. But that was really the only um, cost savings we can see that we can do and have the building meet code. But then we would lose the element of contributing the character that ties to the building history there. So that was just one of the options we saw unless we, you know, start drastically changing scope. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council. Uh, councillor Boston.
Yeah, uh, do you have any idea how much the bid has gone up since the first time, like since we postponed it? I know that was before I got on council, but if we would have moved forward then, how much we would have saved compared to now?
So the, the, I believe the original building back in twenty twenty-three estimate was about one point eight, one point nine, but we did not have any. We did not have any soils estimation at the time. We did not have a survey of the property. And so we didn't know the utility issues such as the electrical that we have been dealing with as well as the groundwater at six foot. We suspected there was groundwater just because of the amount of moisture we saw in the existing building. But, you know, we didn't have anything to tell us what that was until we did the report this summer.
Councillor Latino.
Thank you. Again, I just can't for the life of me figure out why we have to use the bath house that's been there for a hundred years. And to put a, a, a facility so people can have coffee and breakfast and lunch or whatever, when there's all kinds of space to the north of that, not very far to walk, right out the front door, and you're right there at, at the tennis courts. So I'm not going to support this. And I, I think we're, we're doing the wrong thing for the, to, to the people in this community that presented history to this community, the CCC. And so I'm not going to support it.
To answer your question on the distance, we've done a lot of studies on where to place the building. We tried to place it to the north. And we are too far away from the existing bleachers. Bleachers, you have to be within, by the International Building Code, you have to be within four hundred and fifty feet of restrooms. And by putting the building to the north, all the bleachers on the south, southernmost port would not meet that requirement. So that is part of the reason for the place and location of the building.
You got an area to the north, I mean, to the south, that you can do the same thing, not only to the north, but to the south. There's all kinds of space there. I've been there a number of times. I understand athletics. I understand those kinds of things, having done the things that I've done. Okay, so I, 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 I don't like excuses. I'm just saying, I'm not going to support something that, that's going to hurt this community. I will not do that, or the history of this community. Thank you.
Um, councillor Gomez.
Yeah, how do you, I don't know, how do you justify from a one point seven eight-two million dollar project and you're up by a million dollars? How, how does that work?
Scope creep adding additional to the facility. We had a lot of site work added. Originally, we did not have that site work. Originally, it was just gonna be the building. And then I don't know how you control commodities in the market and what things cost.
Well, how are you supposed to take that seriously? I mean, if these processes that you're the experts at and you're off by a million dollars, does that seem a little, maybe it's me? But that's a problem for me. I mean, I don't know how I can, I don't know if I can verify some of the things you're saying to me. The project's taken, what, over a decade? And we're at this stage right now. You have, and the, the flip side of that, and this is gonna be difficult. I look at what the poor mayor's going through. She's gonna, she's been hit with, I've just been informed that they had, they're up to one thousand, one hundred and twenty signatures, petitionary signatures in reference to trying to say this. Most of these guys are baby boomers. And at what point do we consider that and take that into consideration? Maybe take a step back and look at that and say, you know, maybe with all this new information coming in. I mean, I've seen videos of in reference to rallies in the park. At what point do we stop being? I think it's hard-headed or stubborn and give the folks that, the taxpayers that want to keep this facility. What, what point do we pay just a little homage to them? That's all I'm questioning. I don't get it.
Councillor Flores.
I wanted to get back to twenty twenty-three. It sounded like, and that was, I agree with you, that was a period of high inflation, especially on building materials. So that, I think you mentioned that the peak was in April of this year, was, or were you saying twenty twenty-three?
No, the peak right now is actually this time right now. And it, and when contractors do their estimates, you know, they're trying, they're, they don't know if they're gonna get the project for a couple of years. So my, my assumption is that they're gonna project higher than what the current market value is and at the steep. So that one graph showed a very steep. And that was from April until September. We don't have fourth quarter yet because we haven't completed fourth quarter.
Yeah, the, 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 the conversation out in the community is because, well, we saw this as a city council was either August or September. I can't remember. That somehow, when we didn't jump on board right away, that somehow we caused this inflation. When the inflation, I think, has been, you know, around for, for a while. The other thing that I'm hearing from general contractors and unions is that there's a lot of leeway. They have a lot of time to be doing this project and the materials are coming down. Is that a fallacy? That, 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 that general contractors are telling me that lumber prices and other things on materials are actually coming down now because the demand is now coming down. And so we should have, you know, I, I guess I'm sensitive about it because it sounds like the people that wanted to save the bath house are being blamed for the cost being at this level. And I don't see that. I, I mean, it's, it's a combination of it being, you know, so long. It's been around since twenty twenty-three. And am I wrong about that? You're saying that prices since September have been going up and that there, and that the demand for general contractors and subs are going up. And I've heard the opposite, so clarify that.
I don't think the demand for contractors have been going up. I've heard that there is starting to be a slump in the construction a little bit. But, which would bring prices, prices down. We did originally have, I believe, six to seven generals and we only had three bid. You know, you can see this chart right here. It's showing twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, it was starting to go down. So that's kind of where our estimates were going at the time. But then we hit April of this year and it drastically jumped up. So, you know, when, when you're a contractor and the subcontractors, when they're trying to estimate when they're gonna buy the materials and they see a drastic increase like that, they're gonna follow that commodity chart and figure that's when they're gonna purchase materials.
So, when, when you have specifications and you put something out to bid, if things are nebulous within those specs, I, I would imagine if I'm a contractor and it's not clear, you know, what the future holds or whatever, they're gonna be padding that to protect themselves. And I think that's what happened in this particular case. But I think, you know, getting down, it doesn't sound like your presentation is over yet. You, this is part one. And are you, are you next and giving us a solution? Is that what your role is, Steve?
Yeah, we're gonna give you, we're gonna offer up a solution on how to move this project forward.
Because there's, there's another element out here, and that is the amount of community people that want to contribute. I mean, their money is just as good as our money, I guess. And there's a, a group of people that really feel like they could collaborate with us in bringing the prices down, including not raising the bath house, but also making contributions directly to this project. And this decision is really our mayor's decision because this council voted four to three to designate that bath house as a historical building. And it was vetoed, obviously. And I think there's still time for us to have that conversation with this group of people that include general contractors and, you know, people that love historical buildings and people that have actually done the work on other historical buildings. I think there's that opportunity. And I, I'm, I'm just asking the mayor to give us that opportunity. And I, but I, I'm gonna stop right there. And I, you know, it's, but, but I, you know, I'm interested in listening to what the solution is.
Councillor Martinez. Okay, President Aleph.
I guess the bottom line is, is that when we approved this, we approved it at one point six million, I believe. We came through and we said, this is, this sounds like a good deal. I mean, for me, timing is everything. So here we are in a budget process where we sit here week after week after week and, and just cry the blues because we don't have any money. And now we're sitting here, we're, we're one point three million away from a project that we already approved. And it's ironic that we heard a presentation earlier night, tonight, how, how good sustainability is. But when I saw your changes, sustainability is really screwing the pooch here, right? It's not really that good of a deal when you have to go through and that's where all this money seems to be going. I mean, personally, I don't know how we can in good conscience sit there and bump this one point three million dollars. I, I just don't know how that can be done. And, and save face in the community when we're talking about, we don't have any money. We have to do, but we did approve it. We approved the one point six million. I mean, I, it's just mind boggling that a month later, we're looking at a one point three million dollar shortfall. But I'm anxious too, as councillor Flores is, and I'm sure everybody else on council, to see how we can make up the one point three million and who we're, who we're taking money from to, to make that work.
When did you sign on with us, Amy?
On the project?
Yes.
In twenty twenty-three, we did, did the original study that we were gonna try to do the existing building. And that's another reason I showed those slides of Fort Wooton. Because if, you know, if we were to go back and, and use the existing building and add on to it, which we would have to add on to it because it doesn't have near enough restrooms. It doesn't have the visual corridor that's needed for the office space to be able to see all the tennis courts. It could, I mean, it could happen, but at that time, that cost was a lot more. And it has gone up quite a bit more. Like my example with Fort Wooton, you know, we're working on historic buildings. We work on historic buildings. We know how to do them. We worked on City Hall. And the pinning of that building, the estimates by the contractors, not by us, but by the contractors to pin that building back in twenty twenty-one for Wooton have quadrupled, you know. So you, we would have to do the same thing here, I believe, for this existing building. And that would be back at our estimate at the time of four or five hundred thousand, just to pin to keep the existing building from sinking. That's not replacing the seven percent grade inside the building, which doesn't meet ADA. That's not working on all the doors that don't meet ADA currently. That would all have to be done. And then the additional restrooms that have to be.
Correct. I think that, you know, we voted, was it seven zero? For this new bathroom to be built, correct? It was seven zero.
That was end of April, early May was last, was the first time we brought this to the council.
I think some council members did a disadvantage when they didn't show up to your park meeting and listen to what you had to say with your studies and all of your research and all of your testing. We were invited out to that meeting where we listened to what you had to say because since twenty twenty-three, you've been doing the actual study. There's been no other study on this. There's been ideas and thoughts and expertise, but there's been actually no other study to say what your findings were. Now, I'm not surprised by the increase of the cost to do this. Look at seven million dollars for the boathouse. How much more for the fire stations? So this isn't a surprise to me. I don't know why it would be a surprise to anyone on council when every single thing that we've built since I've been on council has changed and increased from what the value engineering that you put out, that was put out there by a contractor a year back or two years back for some of them, and then actually coming up. So to say that it's a shocking thing, I'm not shocked. We've seen that everywhere. So now how are we gonna deal with this? How much money in this project is grant-funded money?
I think we got five hundred thousand is gonna be ARPA. We got a Rawlings foundation of two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know if there's a timeframe that that has to be allocated. Hundred eighty-two thousand, but there was five hundred thousand in ARPA that was allocated. It's if you look on the, the one cheater that I provided you, councillor.
So we have like a couple, another five hundred thousand that we're pulling together out of grant funding, right?
We wanna slip to the, slide to the, the last, the budget document. We can go over it if you have that.
So that's about one point three million in grant funding for this, for this project. Which we would not get after December. Correct, right? So with that being said, now we're at one point. Again, we haven't had a study and some of the expertise that we paid for, we paid for HGF architects and plant engineering to provide their expertise on this job, which they have done on other jobs for us. And I've worked with them on state jobs. They say, that you said that there was a limit in any kind of funny, funding for restoration, right? Okay, so, but we have this funding available to us. So now we're gonna have to, to, and you've seemed to have a solution here, mayor, correct?
Yeah, we, we went through some existing lottery projects over the last few years that had account balances that we could potentially close out and move to the project. So you'll see that under the additional funding sources and capital. Those four projects are lottery funds that we can move and that'll give you a total of about four hundred and thirty-three thousand. And if you go down to the bottom where I've highlighted, we have the remaining funds of two hundred and eighty-one thousand that haven't been allocated yet. We have twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand left over from the parks trucks from earlier in the year. The airport mower and forklift, sixteen thousand. We have a trail repair that the council just passed a couple of meetings ago that has gone out to bid, but it has not been awarded, that we are willing to potentially claw, claw back and do that in a further year with lottery funds of a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. And then there was an existing pending projects, video surveillance in the park. And it was proposed at a million dollars. And so we've talked to the ID, IT department and we can scale back some of the surveillance in the parks and utilize four hundred and fifty-six thousand. So without taking any additional dollars from the general fund, only taking them out of capital projects in the lottery, parks department projects and using the existing ARPA funds that you have left over, we're able to bridge that gap if council wants to do so.
And again, what was really important, I felt, and I think Mr. Boston attended that meeting with me. It was very informative. It had the experts who had done the testing, the soils testing, all of the research as they were hired to do. That's what we do when we do projects like this. And they had all the information. It wasn't information that was thrown at us from not having a study done by anyone else. And so that's how we operate in the world of tax-funded payer projects. We hire experts and their opinions for us to try to go and say, oh, well, but we got this opinion over there. We opened that can of worms. We're gonna open it. We opened that can of worms. We're gonna open it throughout everything we do from now on. But as far as the um, I'm not surprised that the the it's increased in price. Because like I said, everything I've been on that we've project we've done since I've been on council has increased due to infl- um inflation. So um I think that, you know, with the one point three million that we have in uh grant funding that, you know, can be jeopardized. I mean, we'd be, um, you know.
Yeah, it's to ask to be obligated by the end of this year. Um, so we'd have to get it on the agenda for the December meeting for the council to vote on collapsing these projects, creating the uh project and then putting the ARPA dollars towards a project. So that's what we're looking for um consensus tonight. If if the council chooses not to do this and essentially the bath house stays the way that it is, we'll have to reobligate that five hundred thousand dollars that we have in ARPA funds um by the end of the year. And we'll probably have to uh potentially give the Rawlings Grant Foundation back their money. Um, and I think to this date, we've already spent a little over two hundred thousand dollars on design and um testing.
Uh, Councilor Martinez, do you have something?
Yeah, Mayor, I don't understand. So for the additional funding sources at the bottom for the capital projects, are you saying that we, so the one items, so for example, the Arc Levy Trail, um, that had that's already been, that's basically leftover funds in that account.
So for that one specifically, Counselor, you just passed that on a on a previous uh council meeting of a hundred thousand dollars for this trail, but the the money has not has not gone out to bid yet.
No, no, the very top one, Mayor, the trail construction for the.
These are capital projects that the Parks Department um has worked on, worked through over the last several years, I would say.
One was a old levy project with the Conservancy District.
And that's done, right?
It's done and it's there were still funds in there uh pending some discussions with the shelter people, but it hasn't gone anywhere. So um we could close that one out.
So that so I guess my my question is for the top four capital projects, those uh to the tune of forty-three, four hundred and thirty-three K are basically unused funds of completed projects.
Correct.
Okay, then the ARPA funds for eight eighty-two are ones that are going to be re-appropriated because they have not been spent yet.
Uh, some of them, so the two eighty-one has not been spent or allocated, the twenty-eight thousand, the sixteen thousand. Um, those are remainders in those projects for equipment for the city that was under what we had budgeted for, so that would return back to regular ARPA and need to be reallocated. And then the hundred thousand and the four fifty-six are projects that have not been completed yet that have just been pending.
Okay, and then for the um existing funds, where, I missed it, I'm sorry. How where are the grants reflected in this available amount?
Uh, five hundred thousand in ARPA and the one eighty-two in clubhouse tennis courts renovation.
Okay.
And then the other two have been um long existing accounts for probably ten years that the city capital projects that the city has allocated at fifty thousand dollars a year for for several years in order to build up that balance.
So s- I guess, Stephen, one of the things that I know that we talked a lot about was the maintenance needed to sustain the building. Should we not demolish it, right? Cause then we would be, we would still need to like uh construct, you know what I mean? We would need to um fix the building because it's sunken in one corner. We would still need to have those costs, correct?
Correct.
And what's that to the tune of? Was that a part of this or no?
That was in the original study and just to just to structurally not replace any of the mechanical, electrical or um the floorboards, which would need to be completely redone in that building. Just to pin the building, similar to what we were talking about for Fort Wooton, would be about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars at twenty twenty-three prices.
That's for the foundation.
Okay.
Not not like she mentioned the the ceilings, the HVAC, electrical, water. I mean, all that has to be upgraded and.
Yeah, so we we and it only has half the restrooms that you need for the amount of bleachers you have.
Right.
If you if you.
You still would have to add restroom some.
You'd still have to add another two thousand square feet to meet the program to the existing building.
And that that those costs are not reflected into what you just said.
No, the two thousand, um, you know, originally we're looking at four hundred, four hundred and fifty for the new building a square foot. And now with the newer inflation prices, we're probably around seven hundred. So the addition would probably be seven hundred dollars times two thousand plus. Uh, you would probably need, we just remodeled Perry Hall for Health Solutions for um two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot inside the structure, but it didn't have structural issues. It had new windows. It had all those things. So you're still, even if you kept the existing building and did an addition to it, you're gonna be more than a new building.
Okay.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, I I'm looking at this in a different way. Uh, it it when you look at uh where all the other funds are going to come. To me, we're sacrificing this video surveillance in the park. We're sacrificing equipment the airport needs. We're sacrificing a park truck. Uh, and uh I'm I'm not sure uh what else up here on under the capital projects. Uh, we're we're sacrificing.
Well, we're not, we're not sacrificing, Counselor. These are remaining amounts that had been left over after the purchases were done. So regardless, you you're gonna see an uh agenda item, an ordinance or resolution come forward to reappropriate these funds somewhere else. These are balances after we've already done the projects within them. So we're not sacrificing.
Okay, I di- I didn't know where they came from.
Yeah.
But, okay, we have a constituency that wants to help, wants to help the city in funding, uh whether it's uh, you know, uh people that want to donate money, people that wanna save the amount of money it's gonna take to raise the old building. I mean, there's a lot of great ideas out there. I don't understand why it would be uh it it wouldn't be beneficial to listen to these people and have the opportunity of of doing both. Uh, whether it's just moving the building up and and letting the historical people want this this old building, let them take all the responsibility for it. Uh, and there the and there will be a cost in drawing the plans heading north. But I don't understand why uh with such a deficit, we would not be willing to sit down with people that are willing to to help. Um, whether it's through historical, you know, grants, whether it's through shared donations, uh whether it's uh general contractors that really uh wanna be part of this. I don't understand why at this stage of the game, you know, we're unwilling to at least have a meeting about this. And maybe it's not gonna work out in the end, but we don't know unless we try.
I I would think that it's because it's about saving a building and moving this building, which she's just told us that there isn't a location that hits the codes uh when it comes to being near the bleachers. Um, so she's again done that. And we are sitting, we'd be sitting down and talking to someone who hasn't performed a study on their part of it. This is a stud- this is the study is what what we pay for all these studies to see if we can move forward with anything that we do. Um, okay.
Your professional opinion, the the building couldn't be moved up uh up slightly up to the north. I know there's a cost in redesigning. But are you in your professional opinion, you're telling us that that cannot be done?
We looked at moving the building to the north and the taking out the parking spaces, but then we wouldn't have ADA parking spaces that meet adjacent to the building. So if we moved it to the north where those parking spaces are, um, it then we would have to build a parking lot to adjust that. And the parking lot cost is probably another million dollars.
Okay, um, Counselor, President.
Just to clarify, you said you said it was a, you said it was an engineering problem. Now it's a parking problem.
No, I said a code problem, which which code ADA parking is part of code.
Yeah, yes, you have to have ADA parking that meets the code. And the parking to the south would not would not meet the ADA because the grade is pretty steep. If you've been out there between um that area and where the building would be. So you'd probably have to to take out where the uh old street used to be and uh create a parking lot in that area. And parking prices, um parking lot, as I said, it should said, concrete really has drastically increased. And so has site work and those items. So we would have to do a bunch of um area. Also, we'd be triggered into that amount of area. We'd be triggering it into the storm uh prevention by the state because we'd be affecting more than one acre. And that's why that brings that cost up, because now we'd have to build a detention pond for that area.
How many parking spots are we losing? I don't think it was that many.
Right now, we aren't losing any.
No, but I mean, uh, well, how many, how many spots are there right now in that lot?
Eight, eight or ten.
I think there's ten.
Ten?
Maybe I can't. I buy it every day, but I couldn't.
Ten million, I mean, a million dollars to replace the ten spot.
Well, no, cause you'd have to move them around the end and and put them over there, probably where those hidden walls are. You have to take all that out and.
It's the cost to add the storm detention. So once we affect more than an acre on a site, we have, you have to bring into the the state laws of storm detention system so that we don't overburden our um existing storm. And so that area does not have a detention. So once you affect more than an acre, you have to build one.
I think I think what it comes down to basically is you come up with money or short on this bid, which is the one point three. We've kind of proven where we could probably do that. Or we delay it, we redesign it and we run the risk of the price even double and even more so. It seems like I never seen any prices going down. It seems like they only go up. And so by delaying this, redesign that, even working with, you know, all the wonderful folks, you know, it's it's gonna delay it. And it's gonna take time to put those packages together and plans and follow our purchasing policies. And so I I think that's kind of one of the things we run the risk of is is uh running the cost up, delaying the project even longer.
Uh, if we're so concerned about costs, uh, you know, here we have literally hundreds of people that are willing to uh, you know, maybe provide some funds to the city uh where we don't have to re-allocate all this money some.
I guess I haven't seen any of those funds come in, so.
Yeah, that's that's a good answer. Thank you.
Um, Ca- uh, President Aleph.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I get it. I'm not the brightest guy on the face of the planet. But in April, we thought this was gonna cost one point six million dollars. And it's doubled. It's literally almost doubled in seven months. Forgive me if I'm shocked by that, because I have been here for a a while. And no project that we've ever done has ever doubled when we've come we come back to see it the second time. And if that doesn't concern us that it's doubled is like, I mean, the I don't think it's an issue on whether we should build the tennis building. I'm not here to argue about whether we save a bath house or we bring anybody else. The big problem with me is there is nobody that would go out and 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 bid a project in April and then come back in six or seven months and tell us that it's gonna be double. There's something isn't right. And that's all. I don't know what isn't right, but there's something's not right here. How could it double in? You know, I know we have a lot of lot of people here that are very smart and can tell me how something doubles on inflation? Inflation has doubled?
Part of it, yeah.
Mayor Graham.
It wasn't bid out, President Aleph, in April. It was never bid out in April. Our guestimate bid came in in twenty twenty-three and I think Amy said that that was one between one point eight and one point nine. Those were the numbers that we were basing off of. So when we finally were able to secure the one point seven, that's when we wanted to take it out for bid. That's when we brought you the demonstration. We showed it to the council. The HPC then got involved. But it was never put out to bid in April. It was a year ago that it was put out to bid. And I think that you can see several things changed in July of twenty twenty-four with new building codes that came into effect that skyrocketed um the price. And so I think if the city would have been able to put it out right after we brought it to you in April, we might be looking at a different picture right now. So this project was not put out to bid in April. It was put out to bid in twenty twenty-three. We took those numbers and we tried to get as close as we could with the ARPA funds, and that's when we brought it to you. And it has been on hold since then.
Um, Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, well, I don't pretend to be the sharpest pencil on the box, but um and I'm not an engineer and he's anybody on this dais as an engineer. But the taxpayers that we're talking about, their money, um, and to make a million dollar mistake in reference to our fiduciary responsibilities is not acceptable to me. And we can coat this and paint it any way you want, but that's not your money. This is taxpayer money. And for me to explain this to my constituency is getting really hard. Now, in reference, you made a statement about the parking spots. What about on Calley Avenue right there on the side to the northeast? There's about thirty spots sitting right there that can be taken. It's never used over the, I've never seen it. My my aunt lives right across the street. And they park there sometimes, but that whole side of that parking thing is open. I don't know if you're talking about a parking spots.
You're talking that south end of the tennis course next?
On the, I guess it's the east side.
Next to the ditch.
Yeah, but that whole that whole street is empty. Why can't we use parking spots there?
It's like she mentioned, it's too far away for one and it's also it's got a great change.
Too far away for people that play tennis?
No, to get to the restrooms.
For ADA to get to the.
I understand that. Maybe we can make some other spots closer for people that are able to say that you need all thirty spots is not realistic. I do. I've walked that thing three times already.
And we just need to provide ADA parking closer to the building is what.
I don't know that. I'm not, I don't know that. I'm just making the, I'm just bringing this to you because I've got a constituency that's very angry that nobody's listening to them. And they're bringing their their, they are willing to come up, and this is what I understand. This might be the other dig here. If they're saying they have three hundred thousand dollars, up to five hundred thousand dollars that they can bring in, you know, I understand. Show me the money. If they don't have it, or they're gonna do, if they could do with a performance bond, that's something else. But if they can't provide that, I understand that it's gonna risk to the city. I got it. Cause you, so I don't know how that works in reference to all the fiduciary end of that, but what are we doing? Can't we compromise? Can't we take a step back? Everybody's being really stubborn on this and I don't understand it.
It's about one point eight million that we're bringing in um unfunded projects and grant monies, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. The one point uh three one six nine one and then up here at the top, what, the five hundred thousand and the one eighty-two?
Yep.
Or the three fifty? Yeah. That's what it is that we're bringing in grant fund funding to this that is um in jeopardy if we don't make a decision here. Oh, Counselor Martinez.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Mastry. Um, so you know, I feel like typically when we get to the point of um in ordinance beyond the agenda, right? There's typically like a staff recommendation. What's your staff recommendation for this, Stephen?
Oh, to move forward, definitely.
Move forward with?
Transferring the funds around and providing the additional dollars to make this work and and awarding the job to sphere construction.
Okay.
Anything else from council? All right, well.
I need a consensus, so. What we're gonna do, because we have to get it on the.
From council.
I wanna save the building. I wanna save the building.
Counselor, uh, Boston.
You don't necessarily have to make a decision. I just need to know if I have the authority to put this.
This needs to move forward. In my opinion, in my opinion, it needs to move forward to the. This needs to move forward. In my opinion, in my opinion, it needs to move forward to the agenda. Allow us time to study, to get answers and make a a a decision uh when it's on the.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
That's my.
Yeah.
I'm only one guy.
And I think that the counselors who haven't had us uh a sit down with um the staff. Like um the day that we were out at the park should probably have that conversation with those experts that we pay. Cause otherwise, we should never pay for another study again. If we're gonna sit here and pick apart. The study that we paid for that gives that gave us, yeah, that gave us the the uh the the recommendation. You know, so, okay, we'll see, we'll see, move it forward.
And so we're, you're probably gonna see parts of this and probably gonna have to open the agenda back up for the twenty-fifth. To put it on for first reading because what I don't want to happen is put it on the December meeting, first and second reading. And then it doesn't pass on second reading and then we lose out on the ARPA dollars because they have not been obligated.
Mayor, though, because it's um gonna be out of the law revenue fund, does it have to go through first two readings or can it just go through resolution?
It has to go through two.
Yep. The two, say it one more time, the two eighty-one. That has to go through second reading, first and second, but everything else. Are resolutions. Okay, that makes, I think, more sense to me. Thank you.
Can I ask for attorney? With this, we have a deadline in December thirty-one. Would ARPA, uh, would this qualify the emergency uh situation?
I I'd have to look into it more, but uh usually for emergency situation, it requires lost property or or something to that effect. I don't know if it would meet that definition, but I could definitely look into it further. Well, sure.
All right, let's get that on the agenda. Thank you. Um, anything else from council? We're done for the evening. Okay, let's um adjourn at eight twenty-two P M.